Well, just show room, I guess. Today, the 7th, May 17, 2018, the ZBA meeting.
I can't, people can't hear you.
Wait, here we have them. Okay. Welcome to the ZBA meeting. Our first applicant this evening is?
Michelle Skolnick of 24 Little Harbor Road in Cohasset. Request a special permit or finding in accordance with MGL Chapter 48, Section 6, to raise and reconstruct the pre-existing non-conforming dwelling at 4 Proscript Lane, Situate, Assessor's Map 70 blocks, 16, car 13, increasing your gross floor area by more than 20 percent.
If you could just state your name and then... Give me a little idea of what you're doing.
Good evening, I'm Heidi Condon from HP Design. I'm here this evening representing Michelle and Rob Skolnick for her here tonight. And I'm here joined by John Cavanaro from Cavanaro Consulting. John's firm did the proposed site plan before you, as well as designed our new septic system to replace the cesspool. As you know, from the documentation, this is a 1960s cottage that is unheated, this home is a summer house of their family for a number of years. They actually grew up in Hamar Rock, they understand the dunes and the neighborhood, and they decided they'd like to make it a year-round family home. So we proposed to knock down the current cottage, which does get flooded on a regular basis, especially in the storms we had this spring. As it is a slab-on-grade at 704 square feet, the water goes through, the cottage sits in the cottage and then goes out. Our proposed design is to raise the new structure six feet approximately above grade, going from a 700 square foot slab-on-grade, we're going to 49 piers. So it's a huge improvement as to what's touching the ground. And now the water will be free to move under the building. Rock's water will not affect the house, and the house will not stop the water, which is a huge improvement. It's currently a cesspool. John has designed a septic system as far away as he could from the river, as you can see on the drawings. And we're within most of our setbacks. There's one area that we have a cantilevered section that we're requesting 18 inches that goes into the setback, so it's more of a projection. But we are maintaining the existing nonconformity on the other three elevations. I have provided some larger photos of the form we might see the home as it truly is slab-on-grade. I've also kind of copied the assessor's map and blown it up and shown the new footprint. And as you can see, we are still one of the smaller homes within this neighborhood. We are not, we're still similar size in many of the cottages that are in the area. And so we are really trying to improve the situation, as well as still provide a family home for the Skolnicks. We do have a letter from a neighbor. I did submit it. I can read it if the board would like. It's from the neighbor that's immediately, if you're looking towards the water to the left. And it says, "Dear Situate Town Boards, I live at 5 Brunswick Street and am in a butter to the Skolnick's property to live at 4 Proscript Road here in Situate. Michelle and Rob Skolnick have shown me the plans for their new house to create a year-round home for their family. I approve of the project and agree raising the home and removing the concrete slab close to the South River will make a real difference. This new home will be a significant improvement to the neighborhood and is sensitive to the dune landscape of Hamar Rock. I hope the boards will see fit to guide this project towards approval for this new family home. Thank you, Norma DeSulium." So there is one that has been?
Make it one copy.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you. You're welcome. In designing this new home with the Skolnicks and John, you know, we understand that it is 100 percent within the floodplain. And we really looked at the zoning board's kind of purpose when a home is in the floodplain. Section 470, and just looking at A, to protect the health and safety of persons, that's why we're eliminating the slab-on-grade, raising the home, it'll be sitting on 49 piers, and eliminating the cesspool. So, you know, in designing it, that is improving the health and safety of persons and suitable for the march. B, to preserve the value of land and buildings in such floodplain areas, again, going from 700 square feet that is covering the dune, we're going to 39 square feet. So that's a huge improvement. Facilitate adequate protection of the community water supply, again, going from a cesspool to a state-of-the-art septic system, huge improvement. To encourage the most appropriate suitable use of the land. It has been a home since 1950, but we feel putting it up in piers allows the dune to be a dune. It can, you know, retract and expand under this house and it won't be unheated. So we feel that is a huge improvement. And to preserve and increase the amenities of the town, again, we're not touching the dune, we're not adding landscape, we're maintaining the dune and allowing it to be a dune. And that was our kind of goal here. So that's kind of an overview of the project. I mean, I do have larger plans here, so everyone can see that it's the same as what you have. And we also have a site plan from John showing the new and the proposed that you all should have. And then I'm happy to answer any questions that the board has.
Just, so you mentioned the one increase in the nonconformity that seemed about 18 inches. You mentioned it's cantilevered.
It's cantilevered, and it's circulation space inside the home, so we see a million more as a projection.
And so at what height above grade does it jut out?
I can show you in the elevation. So this is the projection, you can clearly walk below it. From grade, it's 10 feet above grade.
Okay.
So it's not just a cantilever that you can't walk under, it doesn't impede wind, rain, snow. And it was one element that the neighbor who wrote the letter liked because she wasn't looking at a long box.
Yeah.
She liked that we tried to kind of punch something out to kind of break out great parts at elevation.
And that's it there on the east elevation?
Yeah. So her home is right here.
Okay.
Yes.
I can't, I can't hear you.
It seems to be more of a projection than a...
I correct, Bobby, an 18-inch projection into the setback is not considered an encroachment.
That's correct for Eves, or in this case, it's a window seat, basically.
Window seat, yeah.
So a bay window would be allowed.
Kind of thing.
Yeah.
Right. Same with Eve overhangs as well.
Right.
Would the, would the, would the home then still be, would it can be still be considered eight, uh...
I think...
The setback 18 whatever, 18.2?
No, I think it would be 19.7.
Or would it still be 19.7?
Yeah.
No, you'd still consider it 19.7 to the, to the main, main wall of the house.
Okay.
And then you're allowed the 18 inches encroachment, if you will, into that, whatever that dimension is.
Okay. So we probably should correct the record, don't you think? Because it's not, you're not looking for a setback, to change a setback, under the defin, under the definition, it seems to me.
Um, yeah, not that setback. I haven't checked the others, but there's a couple of small changes to setbacks.
Right.
For instance, the one on the right-hand side of the plan.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, that's, you know, that's still compliant, but it's a, it's a change, so, you know, however the wording wants to go.
Right.
I think it's, I think Bob, it's just in the chart, it says, "The rear setback goes from 19.7 to 18.2."
I'm sorry, the chart on the plan, got it.
That's where the correction should probably be, it should be 19.7, not a change, not...
Yep.
That alleviates the issue that...
Yep.
That Anthony brought up.
Uh, Bob, I have another question. They're talking about raising it six feet. I mean, is that adequate? I mean...
Well, as I read the plan, the house is in an AE-13 flood zone, so the requirement for an AE zone that we have via the Conservation Commission is one foot of freeboard above that, given FEMA elevation. So if the finished floor is designed to be at 14, that's your one foot above the AE-13 elevation.
Okay.
And that's identified in our elevations.
Okay.
We have gone before the Conservation Commission, we got approval within one hearing, and we've also been approved within one hearing by the Board of Health.
Are there any utilities underneath, or are those all the, most of the first floor?
Everything will be above.
All right, so we don't have to worry about any of the...
Septics, yeah, just pipes coming down through to get into the ground for septic. Anything that, any mechanicals, your condenser would have to be elevated above the flood.
And are those condensers you put in, put that on the side of the house, or...
They're on the side here.
Okay, behind.
You know, they are within the setback, which is allowable in Situate, and we have them raised, so they're out of the, probably, the AE-13.
Great. And septic approval, is that through?
Yeah, yeah, we're off. Through the Board of Health.
Bob, an audience.
Bob, did you have any questions?
No further questions, Your Honor, no. I think it looks good.
Did you just say, "No further questions, Your Honor"?
Honorable man.
Well, it's really...
I make the jokes, Bob.
The wedding is coming up this weekend, you know.
You know, judges' pay is not all that high either. You may not want that position.
It's better than this.
Yeah, probably, yeah.
That is better than this.
Any, any questions from the audience? We've got these... Motion?
I've got my list of motions.
I didn't bring any, I should have. You gonna do it?
Not you.
Okay. Motion that the board find on the applicant, on the application for property at 4 Proscript Lane, that the proposal to raise and reconstruct a pre-existing nonconforming dwelling does not create any new nonconformities, and to the extent that it intensifies existing nonconformities, that such intensifications are not substantially more detrimental to the surrounding neighborhood. What else am I missing here?
Just construction.
That constructed per the plan drawn by Cavanaro Consulting and dated February 7 of 2018, on the condition that a revised plan be submitted for the record, changing the proposed rear setback to 19.7 feet, and also on the condition that the height of the building not exceed what is allowed, allowed by the code.
I forgot the increase.
I forgot the increase?
Yeah, they're increasing 144 percent.
We don't always put that in the provisions, but I think we're happy to...
I think we have to on this one.
To, well, it's allowed to be built per the plan, so the plan says what they're doing, so, um, yeah. Anything else?
Oh, floodplain, we got 20 percent.
What's that?
That's what I was talking about.
Floodplain, we got the 20 percent, so... Do we have a second?
Second.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Did he do one last month? I got off mine, right? I was supposed to do one, and then the applicant handed it in. Huh?
We can do all of them.
I don't want to do all of them. I wanted that one, it was easy.
Ketchup. Do you want to do it?
I got it.
There's gonna be another one.
Is all of them?
No, I still want...
What is our...
It's my second house. Ed.
Thank you.
Sarah wants another one.
No, I do not, I'm not gonna take any more.
I'll do the next one.
There you go. I'm done.
You got off easy, credit.
A second applicant for the T-Bing is...
Robert F. Hayes III of 23 Walnut Hill Drive in Situate, requests a special permit and/or finding pursuant to Situate zoning by law, Section 6, 10.2b, and/or as given by law, Chapter 48, Section 6, and/or any other relief that the Board of Appeals allows raising of a pre-existing nonconforming simple-family dwelling at 303 Situate, Assessor's Map 64 blocks, 6, car 1, and reconstruction of a single-family dwelling.
There on.
Good evening. If you're ready. For the record, it's attorney Mike Hayes, and I represent my nephew Rob and his, and my niece Maureen and their family, who own Free Driftway, and I'll approve you tonight with the home, except for your approval to raise and reconstruct their dwelling at 3 Driftway, and I'll be happy if you'd be free to answer any questions, but our presentation over to Bob.
My name is Paul Mertbeau from Ross Engineering Company, representing the owner of the property, Robert, and Maureen Hayes. The, the existing lot contains 15,400 square feet of land, the perimeter of which is outlined in yellow on this plan. Currently, there's an existing detached garage in the subtlety portion of the lot, and this outlined in brown is the existing dwelling. The existing dwelling is nonconforming, so the setbacks from the driftway, which is actually a paper street, is listed as public by the, um, unimpeded, necessarily here, and also the setbacks from Collier Road, front yard setback in the existing house is two and a half feet. What they're proposing to do is to raise the existing structure and construct a new one, which is shown in blue. The new house would have an increase in the gross floor area of 113 percent, and we'd ask for approval for that under Section 810 to be in the zoning bylaw. With regards to the nonconforming setbacks from the way of Collier Road and Driftway, the new, the proposed setbacks will all be less nonconforming than the existing house, which you can see in brown in this area here. The applicant proposes to change the address to Collier Road. One of the waivers, I mean, one of the, some of the relief we're asking for, which for the lot width, through the house in this area here, it'll only be 72 feet, as measured from the driftway. I just show that for information purposes, but once the address changes, it would have the 100 feet parallel with Collier Road.
Could you speak up a little bit, please? If you'd allow it, thank you.
Well, I'll show an area for a proposed swimming pool, which should be less than 30 feet from the way line, but it's my understanding that there may be plans in work to ask the town to expunge or abandon this portion of the driftway as a public way and revert that to private property. The town clerk shows that driftway is public from the new driftway to the beach, although beach is out here, it doesn't exist anymore. And this portion right here is, in the present state, it's not grassed. There's also a small strip here, about one to three feet wide, which is owned by the buyer to the north of Driftway, Griffin. So the lot line for this current lot does not coincide with the driftway layout. We, we will be going before the Conservation Commission, where it's within 100 feet of the top of a coastal bank. We'll also be performing stormwater calculations and a permit for that, which would also be approved by the Conservation Commission. There's very little grade change proposal on the slide at this time. With that, I'll end and answer any questions that you may have. Oh, just before I end here, there's also a zoning chart, which lists the existing and proposed...
Paul, why, why are you showing us the pool? I mean, I don't think we've ever dealt with a swimming pool. Or authority to do it, so I'm not quite sure what the purpose...
In the event that, that there's a pool placed in this area here, and in the event that the driftway is still a public way at that time, the setback from the pool to the layout line would be 15 feet as opposed to 30 feet.
The pool is required to be 30 feet from the setback?
It's supposed to be 30 feet from a way line? I'm not sure how Bob would interpret that, whether the property doesn't go into the driftway?
Not being an attorney, um, yeah, I mean, if you've got a ruling that Collier Road is your, is your address, and your property line doesn't go to the driftway, then you could conceivably call that a side lot line. Right, which would only be an eight-foot setback required.
But we're not, we don't permit pools.
No.
So you're not seeking relief from us for the pool?
Just, just for the setback.
Okay, for the house.
That's, that's in the event that someone were to interpret the seven to be 30 feet from the way line, but Bob's correct, and once the, you know, once, once the address is changed to recollier road, then the dimensions will all be taken from Collier Road, including rear yard, setback, side yard, setback, so this would be a side yard, you know, conform. This, this is just a cover-all basis under the...
So when you, when you change the address, um, oh, you're still gonna be more than 20, you're gonna be 20 feet from the rear yard setback at that corner?
Yes.
Okay.
And just another question, Paul, is there a view weasement on this too? Is that...
Yes, there is.
Is the proposed structure affecting that at all?
No, the view weasement's coming across here, and the proposed structure is, the covered porch has a, this, this covered porch is existing.
Speak up again, please.
The, the brown is, is the existing house, which is going, but the E would, you know, the E would be in six, would be within six inches of the, here weis, I believe, on the second floor, first floor.
But you have a covered porch. The covered porch is, belongs to the existing or the proposed?
Yeah, the covered porch is the existing house.
Okay.
Yeah, which is right in here, you can see the line goes right through the covered porch, but that, that's going outside, existing house is raised.
So it must be some sort of a deed restriction, because we don't, as a town, we don't have view restrictions.
It's on the, it's on the...
Yeah, when, when they purchased the lot, there was a restriction, it was recently, and you, right from there, go to the Griffins.
The deed restriction is that there can't be any structure or plantings in excess of six feet on that line, and there is no structure, the proposed reconstructed house is out of that zone, and any, anything else that the Hayeses would do there would meet the deed restriction. I also would just like to, just mention to the board that my niece gave to Annie two letters from Director Barretson's...
Yeah, we have them.
In favor of the proposal.
They appear to be plagiarized to each other. I don't know if that's an issue.
They're very good friends.
Nice job. Okay.
Any other questions?
I'm just... I'm just curious how you can have the address for the property on a way that it doesn't abut. It would seem that it's not a, it's not a request to change it. I would think it would have to be changed to Collier.
Well, I would agree with that, that the DPW is the...
Arbitrator.
Arbiter of what street you're on and what street address you have, so if approved, that's what we will go next.
It would simply seem to me that that's, that's a, you know, a, a change of, of what is apparently a scribbler's error or something, and someone didn't realize that it didn't abut it, but it doesn't, so I would have no problem viewing this as being a side yard setback, not abutting the way.
So could I just ask for clarification?
Just a minute, we'll, we'll finish up, but then we'll open it up to the audience, so...
It was apropos of this exchange, that I wanted to ask for clarification.
Okay.
So are you saying...
You have to state your name and address, too, just for the record?
My name is Kate Sullivan, and I live on Moreland Road, about a block from the proposed site. And just to bring a little historical perspective, that, that used to be a road all the way to the cliff, that's now the public way, which, that's why it was called 3 Driftway, that's why it was a driftway address, even though now that doesn't make sense.
Well, no, the, the point is that in the layout of the road, the Griffin property actually owns both sides of the layout of the road. There's a strip of land on the between, that's owned by Griffin, between driftway, the layout of the road, and the existing, the property we're considering. So that being the case, I don't see, at least in my humble opinion, not a, not a trained attorney or anything, but it doesn't abut the way, so I don't see that it has any reason to be addressed as such.
Okay.
There may be reason for fire and safety that they want, that they chose that, because it would be more, less confusing, or something like that, but I think it was an error at one point. The, the reassigning the address makes sense to me, and, and that also changes all of our setbacks, which is what we're concerned about. It would make that a side yard, not a front yard, which goes from 30 to 8 feet.
Not that this is really germane to anything.
Could have been a broker.
But you brought it up.
And street, and the ocean.
Yeah, no, I mean, if you've got a public way, you know, the public has a right of access through that, so how can you just extinguish it by doing something?
We have no intentions of doing that.
Oh, I thought I got the impression, I thought somebody said that, you're gonna try to extinguish the public way, did I misunderstand something?
In the future, there may be some action taken, ask the town to extinguish the way. I didn't say our clients were going to do it, I didn't mention any things, it was just a possibility.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's a big issue.
And my clients understand that that is currently a public way, and people have the right to walk up and down that to get to the beach, they, they have no problems with people exercising those rights, and they have no intention to do anything regarding trying to expunge that.
Okay. Not, again, not that it really matters in this hearing, but I just thought it was kind of an odd thing to say, so, um, what, how big of a deal is it to get your address changed? Have you ever done it?
I have done it, and the, again, the, you would start with DPW, they would talk to the Fire Department, and if it makes sense to DPW and the Fire Department, it is not a big deal to do, frankly, but it is up to DPW.
Because the question I had is if, if you, your, your, your plans really contemplate the front yard being one place, the side yard being another place, which is, you know, not the same as the address, so if we can, you know, it seems to me we'd have to almost condition the approval on the changing of the address, because if it's in fact not the front yard, but rather the side yard...
I think the address doesn't always determine the front yard, though.
That's right.
Although, although from the DPW's point of view, that's the case, but from our point of view, we don't need an address to determine what we consider the front yard.
And at the same time, Sarah, I would state that regardless of what address it is, it is pre-existing and nonconforming on that side, and we are going to make it...
On which side are you referring to now?
On the driftway side.
This is true.
And we are going to reduce any nonconformities there. If it was a, if the, if you look at it from the point of view where it is a side lot, side yard, we are going to make it from, change it from nonconforming to conforming. If you look at it as a setback from a road, the driftway, with stick, we are going to make it...
Less nonconforming.
Nonconforming to less nonconforming.
Okay. It's a good argument, I don't know, it's gonna help... I don't know, it's going to help you with your pool, but, you know.
Well, I think, you know.
It doesn't abut the way.
I don't know anything about pools.
That's not a problem, fortunately.
Yeah, so, and it's not, that's not an issue for today. Okay.
Do you have any questions? Yeah, well, one would be, it does need approval from the Historical Commission. It's over 100 years old. So to demolish the existing house, we'll need a review and approval from the Historical Commission. Otherwise, there's a demolition delay bylaw that would kick in.
One year, right?
One year, right.
The prior owner had been to the Historical Commission on that issue.
So it's been resolved.
Are there any questions from the audience? Any other questions?
John Sullivan, 12 Park area. Does the board know if when Griffin purchased the property from Genoitz, it contained that one-foot strip?
I don't think we do know, and why does it matter?
Well, it is, it would be interesting to know if in fact that one-foot strip was conveyed, was created at the selling of the property to the Hays. And I don't know if the board knows that or not. Because that seems to be one of the arguments for changing the address and changing the way the setback is looked at. I don't know if the board knows that or not.
Well, I suppose when you, it's an interesting question. But if we assume it was, if it wasn't, it's, it would still be non-conforming setback if it was a front yard setback. Because it's, even with that piece of property, I think if I'm reading the map, the plan right, it would be 14 feet from the road setback as opposed to 30 feet.
I understand your question. We don't want folks conveying out little strips of land to better their zoning and edge around the code. I don't know for certain that that wasn't done here. I, you know, given the age of the deeds, it seems somewhat unlikely. It's easy enough to figure out by going to the records. But I wouldn't even think that it would be worth the trouble for someone to do that in this instance because they're not really gaining anything by not owning that strip. They're pre-existing non-conforming either way.
Yes, if the board knew that. And I have something for the board's consideration if I could pass these out. This was put together by Lyle Nyberg, who is a neighbor who could not be here tonight. And it talks.
Is this the first time the board's getting this? This will be email?
This just shows a bit of the historical significance of this house. Mike, do you want to copy?
Please, sure.
Sure. This house goes back to at least 1909. And it's an extremely significant property. And I just wanted to read onto the record what is known about this property if I could. And.
Are you referring to historical significance?
Well, one of the criteria, as I understand it, is that the proposed use will not adversely affect the neighborhood. So with that in mind, I just wanted to read this in the record. This was put together by Lyle Nyberg. This building, talking about the Marguerite because the house has a name to it, meets the criteria for individual listing on the National Register of Historic Places as a fine example of colonial revival style of housing developed in the early 1900s for an important summer colony in Situate. It possesses historic integrity of location, design, setting, materials, and workmanship. The building, built circa 1909, possesses historical significance as one of the earliest houses in the Rivermore Summer Colony, developed and built by George F. Welch. It is featured in a number of period postcards highlighting the colony. In addition, the building possesses an historical association with a major Situate figure, George Welch. He built and rented out this house until it sailed. George Welch was a significant property owner and developer, an important public figure in Situate, an important business owner, having founded the Welch Company in 1879, originally supplying coal, lumber, timber, building supplies, and home furnishing that is endured to this day. In addition, the building possesses historical significance as the summer home of Meyer Blumfield from 18, who lived 1878 to 1938 and his family. He was a nationally prominent figure who led the vocational guidance movement and who founded the science of industrial relations. That's this home that these folks want to bulldoze.
So the question I have is, was this brought before the Historical Commission?
As I understand, I spoke to Steve Litchfield. And Steve Litchfield indicated that he had not received any contact from any applicants with regard to this. He indicated that at some point it may find itself before the Historical Commission, but it is not there yet. At what point that's going to happen, it's not clear.
Very interesting.
Any other questions?
So, good evening all.
Just, we just need your name, please.
Abe Murray for Collier Road.
Thank you.
So I'm directly across from Three Driftway. So three simple points. And we all have to live together at the end of the day. So I'm addressing these as much to my new neighbors as to you all. First point, we object to the size of the increase of the house's footprint. So the plans I viewed in the zoning office, which are those on the wall there, showed well over a doubling in the length of the house along the road, blocking almost all of our views to the east and significantly impinging on the views of many other neighbors in the neighborhood. We all know that a raise and rebuild is in store for many houses on our cliff. We planned for such an event when we rebuilt our own house. We did not expect the neighbor to entirely block their neighbors to the west. And I believe many in the neighborhood are unhappy with this proposal. We would prefer to see the extension of the non-conforming line much further to the north at the telephone pole in the worst case to preserve some of the open character of the neighborhood and views of our neighbors and certainly my own views. The variance application states that this proposed footprint will not adversely affect the neighborhood. I strongly disagree with this assessment. While the non-conforming lines may be technically more conforming, they're still exceedingly non-conforming. And we are extending non-conforming lines almost three times where they are today. I would say that's quite adverse on the neighborhood. Second point related to the first. While these plans may or may not be valid by the strict letter of the law, and I am not a liar, it does not seem the spirit of the law to allow such drastic extensions of non-conforming lot lines. The proposed non-conformance is much worse in spirit than the prior. So while technically more non-conforming, the spirit is just not there. Though I was not able to fully explore this because in the zoning board, the only plan I could see was the footprint and not the full elevations. God only knows what else will come. Third point, part of the problem with this plot building so far to the south appears to relate to that land swap with the Griffins to the north. That land swap was surprising in that it created a worse non-conformance with this property. If you didn't raise and rebuild, that land swap created an exceedingly worse non-conformity to the north, right? If that is part of what is pushing the new property to the south, I would ask the zoning board to actually preserve the non-conformance as it exists to the north. Because while the non-conformity might technically be worse, we're talking about non-conforming to a non-existent road, to a silly land, a lot of land that swapped the neighborhood. It's kind of a game at this point, and it's adversely affecting the neighborhood. So three simple points. I generally object to the amount of increase of non-conformity. I feel this is not in keeping with the spirit of the law. We feel the land swap with the Griffin exacerbates this issue. And we question whether approving this sets up our town for lawsuits on these points and invite our new neighbors to kindly revisit their plans with more consideration for those around them. Remember, we do have to live with each other when you're done. Thank you.
So, Abe?
Do you want to address something?
Just to go back for a second. In looking at the deed, it looks like the property was peeled out of the Griffin parcel in 2018. Please.
Can I just quickly, just a second? Griffin, Mr. Griffin cut out that sliver, that I shape, prior to the Hayses purchasing the property?
Prior to when? What day?
Prior to the, to the Hayses' purchase.
So in anticipation of the Hayses' purchase.
Well, anticipation, I would assume anticipation of selling the property, correct?
Right. I don't think it makes a difference in this application, but I do want to answer the question. In looking at the deeds quickly, it does appear that there's at least a good chance that that sliver was left there so that there would not be frontage along Driftway. I, I think that that was, I don't think that there's necessarily, anyone did anything wrong. It's probably what I would have done if I was carving up this lot. But it, just based on the vesting deed and that it came from the Griffins and how recent it is, it appears like that was left that way or made that way on purpose. It looks as though the Griffins owned all of this prior to 2018. So someone consciously put that lot line there.
Well, wait a minute here. Did they own all of it as one single parcel? Or did they own two separate parcels?
You know, the Driftway, the Driftway is a public way. That's a 30-foot strip that separated the two houses that were owned by the Griffins. And in January this year, the planning board endorsed the plan. Griffin's lines have had to carve out that narrow strip that runs along the southerly side of the layout line of the Driftway, which is a public way. And then in March of this year, the Hayses purchased the property. So Griffin cut that out for a reason.
Yeah.
And the Hayses, my understanding, they were not the first or the only people looking to purchase the property. Griffin did that ahead of the sale of the property to whomever.
Yes.
So here's the question, though. Because there's plenty of case law that says you cannot, you cannot convey land to make your land non-conforming. So although, like I had previously said, even with this, it doesn't make it conforming. So I'm a little bit confused at the benefit of the sliver, except for a pool?
I don't know that the benefit of the sliver benefits.
You know what the sliver does? I'll tell you what the sliver does.
It protects.
If and when, no, the Driftway is a public way.
Right.
If and when that way is expunged by the town, okay, there's a thing called reversion rights in survey law. And what would happen is, the person who owns property on each side of that way.
Right, gets half of it.
Would own the center of it.
Right.
So technically, the Griffins would own that 30-foot strip.
Right.
Right, so it wasn't to benefit the applicant, it was?
It doesn't benefit our applicant or anyone else who purchased the property.
Benefits the Griffins more.
He was thinking ahead.
And Mr. Griffin, in addition to that, would be great ones, frankly, to preserve his view.
To preserve what?
His view.
Including the view easement that he put on this property.
Exactly.
Which would have had to been greater if he was at risk of losing half the Driftway. Absolutely. I didn't mean to go off on a tangent. I just want to, especially because we got a question about it before.
Right.
For purposes of this application.
I don't think it makes a difference. I agree.
The only non-conformities are up in that corner of the Driftway and Collier Road. And once it becomes an address on Collier Road, then the new house would conform and all the other pre-existing non-conformities would go away because the old house would have been raised.
Well, you still wouldn't conform with the front yard setbacks.
You would if you used the average along Collier.
There's an average setback.
Oh, with the average?
Yeah.
Oh, God. Okay, so I want to go back to this again.
Which is?
Which is the Historical Society issue, which.
Keep in mind, too, that we're just receiving this and reviewing it today, so.
Right, right, right. So I have to tell you, full disclosure here. I looked at, I looked at these, the pictures that were provided to us. And no offense, I can't imagine why you would ever want to raise this building. I think it's fabulous. But I'm encouraged by the fact that apparently they haven't been to Historic Society. So I don't know what you were referring to, Mike, but if they haven't, they haven't. In order to demolish this, they have to go before Historic Society. And the Historical Society may say, no, you can't do it. I mean, I don't really know the details of, or they may say.
Delay it for a year.
Delay it for a year and then, and then get to, and then get to do it? That'd be too bad.
One of the reasons we're here for a raise and reconstruct is that the Hayses have had the property looked at by structural engineers. The building really is not in the type of shape in their experts' opinions, just to put some lipstick on it.
I don't think it's going to take, you know, a case of lipstick to build a new one at this, at the size and what we're doing. Having said that, if it, the only thing you can hope that if it's delayed a year, maybe somebody would buy it and move it if it's at all possible because it's, I'm anxious to go home and read about this. And it's, you know, I guess that's, you know, I know you have a dream house in mind and I hope you, you know, whether it's this house or another house, or rebuilt house, you know, hope you get your dream house. But this looks like a fabulous house. And I always think it's really sad to realize how many of the old beautiful homes in Situate have been demolished over the years. Once they're gone, they're gone, so. But that's the process, nevertheless, it's in place. And so maybe something, you know, through the Historical Society comes out of this and somehow it can be preserved. That's all I have to say about that.
To that point, as Mike said.
Name and address.
Sorry, John Sullivan, 12 Park area. As Mike said, it cannot stop it, it can only delay it.
Yeah.
And that's, and therein lies the problem. One of the things, I spoke to Lyle Nyberg and he said, this would be a perfect house to simply move, to make non-conforming, to literally move the structure. We heard the presentation before this one. Obviously, that house was ramshackle. This house is in good shape. The gentleman who lived there and still lives in the neighborhood took very good care of it. I can't speak to what engineering studies found, but the house is in excellent shape. And one of the hopes was that it would be retained because it is one of the signature homes in this neighborhood. Welsh colonies were only built in a couple of spots in Situate. And this neighborhood has the greatest concentration. And it would be a travesty that this be reduced to well.
It would, but, you know, again, in our, in our country, you buy a piece of property within the confines of the law. You get to do what you want to do there. So, you know, again, I feel like you've got a few guardian angels of the house in the neighborhood and they're going to keep a close eye and do what they can to find a way to preserve it.
Their motivations are purely historical and have nothing to do with the view, right?
We don't, we don't have a view issue in this town. We don't have a view, rights of review. It just doesn't exist. It could, it could exist if people in the town wanted to make a, you know, a law, a bylaw regarding it, but we don't, you know, so.
And there are other boards that the Hayses have to go through before anything happens, including conservation.
Yeah.
If we were misinformed as to the fact that it had already been in front of the history, they have to go through that.
Right.
Certainly the Hayses, if anyone is interested in that structure, they're not going to tear it down. They would let someone take it down.
Oh, absolutely.
Absolutely. They might help them take it.
It's free if you want it, right? Once you get permitted.
It's not inexpensive to move houses, but maybe something.
It's very expensive to tear them down.
If the Bayleys are here, they got a big lot there. Maybe they, maybe they want to move it over, just one over.
Are there any other questions, Stu, from the members? Yes.
Kate Sullivan, five Moreland. I am sorry that we don't have some, some sort of law that has the right of view. But I know that's the way of the world and we've seen some great, beautiful, very big, very long houses go up on the cliff. And that has made me much more interested than ever before in protecting and preserving access to the sweet air and the great views that you can get when you get straight to the cliff and your view is not obstructed by houses. So we currently have, we have a good right-of-way down at the bottom of Lincoln. We have what is either a right-of-way versus a private lane that takes, takes you to the boardwalk to the spit. But we have a public way. And it is not the case that that has not been interfered with. Indeed, it has been greatly interfered with. It is now landscaped as a driveway. If a car is parked there, you can't see the ocean from Driftway as you walk down towards the ocean. My neighbors have been told that it is private and they've been kind of chased off that area. And we're all people who used to bring our grass clippings down to the end of the Driftway and throw them over the cliff for the health of the road.
I wouldn't be admitting that in public. I wouldn't be admitting that in public.
No, that's actually illegal.
Can we, can we scramble that for her? Yeah. Not good.
But I'm going back more than fifty years.
Oh, okay.
So, um.
You, you weren't even born then, so.
Well, I was very much born. But I, I'm just saying, you know, there were, there, that was a road right to the cliff.
You're talking about the Driftway?
The Driftway.
Yeah.
And I, I am horrified to hear that someone might, the town might consider it.
I would think that would take, does that take a vote of town meeting or something?
I don't know, but I'm.
Does anybody know? Do you know?
It, the abandonments of streets is a, is a process that has many facets. It can be somewhat simple. It can be extremely complicated. I, I think that's, I don't want us to get off on a tangent on that in this hearing.
But my point is.
Because these property owners don't even own the underlying fee to it. So if that happened, it would have nothing to do with them.
But my point is, it's a public way that where the use has been restricted. And I'm very, very happy to hear someone say that they would not restrict it if they were owners. And that, that is what I wanted to emphasize tonight.
Thank you.
I live in front of the home, fifteen Lincoln Ave. Um, so I have sort of a few points. I didn't really prepare anything. But to echo sort of what's already been said, uh, just as additional support, um, the historical side of it is, uh, sort of why I'm here as well. I live in one of the Welsh colonial houses. It was built after Marguerite. Uh, they all have names. So it's actually kind of neat when they're, you talk about the cottages that have the names. We renovated ours, brought it back up to snuff, and it's beautiful. And all the other Welsh colonies that are in the neighborhood are beautiful and they all have signature windows. And it's just, it's really nice to go into them. And it's really sad to hear that one of them isn't going to get razed, especially the most important one. And if you, if Lyle would share his slideshow presentation, it would be awesome to see for everybody. I, I mean, half of the pictures in there, you look in the background and you see the Marguerite with his signature four dormers on all sides.
Yeah.
And it's in the postcards. There used to be a post office up there. It was right next to the post office. Um, all sort of, you know, different wealthy people would rent it. It was sort of a known, it was marketed all the way out to like Oregon or something to like, for people to come to Situate to the, um, to the colony up in, in the cliff. And they marketed, you know, the fact that you could get to beach and this and that. And that, that particular house was used in the marketing, you know, back in the nineteen twenties. Um, so anyway, for me, it's, it's just really, it's upsetting that, that, that that's going to happen. That's not here. I know that's, you know, that's not this board and we'll, um, you know, continue with the historical folks. As far as sort of the, um, the view and the kind of detrimental nature to the, to the, to the cliff, as John kind of read, is, is part of it. You know, you do, when you come up the hill, the first thing you see is that house and it's beautiful. And, you know, it's, it's old and it kind of welcomes you into the neighborhood. And there is a little slice there where the, where the paper road is that you can see the, the water. And it would be pretty sad if that went away. But as you kind of turn that corner, you do get a nice big view to, to, um, to the other point that, you know, that view is, you know, it's a million-dollar view for all of us. And it, it would be a real shame to now have a giant wall there. And we've already had, you know, three or four other houses that, that sort of kind of fell into the same situation that sort of affected that as well. So, you know, it would be a, we'd have yet another one to do that, so.
Yeah, we just have to keep in mind, we can't restrict the view.
I understand.
You know, that's, it's just.
I, I understand. I understand. You don't, you can't do anything with the historical side either. So.
Yeah.
It's just one more, you know, voice.
So Abe Murray, for Collier again. I, I understand that view is not calculated by the law when we talk about adverse impact on a neighborhood. But the amount of non-conformity seems like it is. And here we're talking about extending a non-conforming line significantly in many directions. And I think that's where the adverse impact comes. And I think that that wall of house that we will all look at is the non-conformity that adversely impacts the neighborhood.
So I, John, I have a question on that. Is that line non-conforming? Bob, the proposed home will be set back eleven point four feet at all points from the road.
Right.
The average setback calculation, am I reading this right?
Yes.
Would make the required setback per the code eleven point zero five?
Correct.
So.
Conforming.
So they would be turning a non-conformity into a con, a conforming characteristic of the home?
Using that exception, which is in the zoning bylaws and perfectly available to anyone to use, then that's correct.
So they could be running it even further to the south as long as it maintained that eleven point four. It didn't create any other non-conformities. We wouldn't have any power whatsoever to judge this application based on that characteristic. I, I, the, the average setback calculation in the code is a, is a funky piece of our code, but it's there and it is. It's not obscure. Plenty of folks are using it and they're using it here. And from what I can see, they're using it properly. The proposed dwelling will be conforming as to front setback.
And both sides, right?
Yes, but I think the front setback is, it doesn't look conforming, but it is.
I, here's my challenge, and I, I, I find over the years I give this same speech. The zoning board is here and the zoning bylaws are here to protect every citizen in town. Remember that we're often asked by people who have a passionate desire to not have change to limit what an owner can do with their property. Problem is, once we do that to one owner, we're doing it to all owners. And trust me, you don't want to limit your rights on your property. Anyone who owns their property wants to do with it what they are allowed to do by right. Bylaws that are in place do restrict what you can do. Um, they've been put in place over the years by votes of the town meeting. And it's hard to get one, um, changed or, or put in place. This application before us, with the exception of the question of whether or not it, it, uh, it has a front yard setback on Driftway. And I, I just can't see that it does. It's, it's, it doesn't. I, I, I dare anyone to come up with, or I challenge anyone to show me how it has a front yard setback on Driftway. It's conforming in every, the proposed structure is conforming in every way. Um, if this structure burned down and it was an empty lot, they could build the property that they, the proposed structure that they're asking for. There'd be no reason to even be before us, as, as far as I can read it. Um, the, the good thing about having a zoning, uh, meeting is it get, does give the neighbors an opportunity to hear what's going on, to speak up, to disclose things that might not be, the owner might not be aware of and other such things. But in the end, we're only here to enforce the bylaws that have been established by the town. We don't have a view, uh, restriction bylaw. It's, it comes up not infrequently, but if you want a view, you got to buy it. If you want to buy the land, own the view, you're all set. But as long as, um, the land is privately held by someone else, they have, within their rights to do what they want. And it's not about, we all have to get along in the end. It's, it's their land. It's their property. And I can be sympathetic with the idea of an old, an old structure, historic structure. But if we took that approach too much, we'd still be looking at, um, Dream Wall being used as a dance hall, um, and basically ninety percent of the time being inhabited by animals, humans. The folks who bought that property made some significant changes. It hasn't, it bears a slight resemblance to what was, but it's by no means, uh, Mr. Lawson's property. So, uh, I guess I'm, I always feel anxious about this. I, I hate saying it. But when you, when people come out and say, well, can you do anything to not allow them to do this? No, if it's in the bylaws, we have to allow it. And that's the way it is. And we would do it for every single citizen that comes before us with a request to use their property. So, um, and as I'm rereading this, with the average front yard setback calculation as stated, we have a plan stamped by an engineer. The applicant's proposed structure is completely within the setbacks and the, um, the restrictions allowed in our bylaws. He's actually not making any new non-conformities. He's reducing existing non-conformities by his, by their request. For whatever it's worth, my humble opinion.
What, yes, just your name?
Preston Bailey, ninth Collier Road, Drift, about it.
Yes.
And we hundred percent support them.
Thank you.
We support the, the plan.
I'll leave this with a motion.
Yep. Uh, move that the applicant, the application for, uh, a finding that the raisin reconstruct of the property at, uh, pre-Driftway as proposed in the, as proposed in the, uh, plan by Ross Engineering dated April ninth, two thousand eighteen, does not create any new non-conformities to the extent that it might, um, it might, uh, extend existing non-conformities. They are viewed as not substantially detrimental to the neighborhood. I don't even think we have to find them to twenty percent, except that I guess it goes coming down, right?
Right, but it hasn't actually happened yet, so I as well.
Yeah. Um, to the extent that the increase in size beyond, uh, twenty percent, um, likewise is consistent with the use, uh, in the neighborhood and is not substantially detrimental. And move to grant the relief, which there isn't any, but move to grant the applicant's, um, request. I'm not granting any relief.
But what they've, what they've done with the address change is also the width.
The address change doesn't have anything to do with it.
Yeah, it's, it's the property.
The lot's the lot. The lot already exists.
It's the Marguerite. It's not.
Take care of, once it comes down.
What's that?
Once it gets, once the building comes down, the new structure.
Yeah.
See, that doesn't have any relief.
Will it need it?
Yes.
Yeah, because it, as it sits now, it's a.
Because they're reconstructing it.
But if it, if it burned down, there'd be no need for any relief.
Right.
They could build the house the longer bill.
Well, that's the argument.
On the empty lot.
Well, I wouldn't start encouraging people to burn down houses.
I'm not encouraging. I'm saying if it were burned down, I'm saying that the.
If it were to burn down.
If, if they were to tear this down at their own risk, they would have an empty lot that they could rebuild on. They'd have to stay within all non-conformity, all conformities and they'd have to conform in every way, but they would.
If they didn't call this, if they didn't call Driftway a front, a front yard, they could have done this by right.
Yeah, it's not a front yard.
It's not a front yard. Yeah.
Right, so, uh, my opinion is, is that it's, it's not a front yard.
Yeah, I'm, I'm with Ed that, that the address doesn't have a bearing, right?
It abuts a landowner, which would make it a, I, I think would make it a side yard.
I agree.
Because I think a front, a front yard, a front setback has to about a street or, and it doesn't about a street.
Yep.
It does about a street. This is a public way. Driftway is a public.
It doesn't about it.
That's the strip. That's Griffin's strip.
Oh, that's the strip. Okay, right, right. I know. That's what bothers me more than anything. Well, not.
I categorize that as a side yard setback and that, uh, yeah, I'm not sure why it's here. I think they could have built by right.
It is, however, uh, non-conforming. It's less than eight feet.
Right, well.
So that would be the, that would be the reason for a section six, fine.
But, but it is conforming by our bylaw on average.
I'm, I'm talking, I'm sorry.
The side, no, the.
The side.
The side. The side yards, their proposing is eleven, eleven point nine and ten, right?
It currently is non-conforming, but the proposed will be existing, will be conforming.
But since it's currently non-conforming, that's why we need a section six, fine.
Well, I, I think it's, I, I have a compulsion to say that people cannot start conveying, you know, slicing off pieces of the land to make them non-conforming. It would have been non-conforming anyway.
Correct.
That's the, to me, that's the critical part of that conversation. Because they can't make it non-conforming by getting rid of some property.
No, they didn't.
Correct. And, and to that point, Sarah, I, I would say that if, when that sliver was cut off, if it made the current dwelling that my nephew and my niece own, uh, non-conforming, they are fixing that problem.
Right. The new dwelling won't be.
Yeah, they might be fixing it, but you're coming under the bylaw on the, on the premise that it's non-conforming.
But it was non-conforming at that time.
That's what I'm saying. That's the only reason.
And in other ways.
It would have been non-conforming anyway. But if it was otherwise non-conforming, a slice was cut off that created a non-conforming, you can't do that and get the benefit.
We all recognize that. Everybody's in agreement there.
Well, we're all in agreement. I don't know who's, who's listening going, wow, what a great idea. I think I'll see if I can work that out.
It will not work.
It will not work. Right.
Second.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Stay on, stay on the Historical Society.
Yes, I'll be happy.
Makes sense what I tried to say.
That's their housewarming gift.
I don't know.
Can we, uh, Rick, we go see any questions?
Yeah, of course.
Those are the only copies.
Yes.
Thanks to you, we're closing.
Those to Mr. Hayes or Robert and nephew?
Hey, what time does the pizza get here?
You did it? Want some of my peanut butter crackers?
That's mine.
Oh, yikes.
Greg, have you been somewhere?
No, I.
I was going to say, you're like, you know, really dark.
Winter.
You look good. You look young.
Yeah, he always looks good. I hope that wasn't a sexist thing to say. I like Greg.
You may need him.
Did you, did you happen to go buy this house? Eighty-seven Glades?
You can keep that one. All right, we're getting ready for, uh, third applicant this evening.
Doris M. Crary and Dennis, uh, of two seventy-nine South Street in Halifax. Request a special permit or finding pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter forty-eight, Section six and/or Section eighteen point three of the Situate zoning bylaw and/or any other relief being necessary by the Board of Appeals to allow the raising and reconstruction of a pre-existing non-conforming multifamily dwelling in eighty-seven Glades Road in Situate, Assessor's map five block three, parcel twenty-eight.
Good evening. Danny McKinnon representing Doris Crary, Doris Crary.
Right.
Eighty-seven, owner eighty-seven Glades Road. I'm an attorney with a practice in Situate Harbor. I think this would be a pretty straightforward raisin reconstruct, except for the wrinkle that, uh, there's a multifamily dwelling contained within the structure on the property. Um, submitted some documentation on that. Happy to answer any questions about the, uh, use as to the, um, dimensional requirements. I would rely on Greg Morris for that.
And just to clarify the multi, is it, is it two families?
No, it's, it's currently four, four units in there. Uh, I pulled the assessor's cards back into the twenties. It shows that the structure was built in nineteen twenty and it always reflected as having five units. But, uh, as long as my client has owned the property, it's been four.
You've got five in your submission here.
I said, I, I think I said right in the bottom paragraph, right underneath that, that during my client's period of ownership, she is, she has only had four units. But the assessor's cards do reflect five units. All three assessor's cards, the current card, the one back in the nineties and the earlier one, I pulled it as a date of nineteen twenty-eight.
And the, the cards don't reference number of bedrooms, right?
Uh, I believe they do.
Yeah, one of them says ten.
Yeah, yeah.
As time went on, units got bigger, I bet, and.
I, I can add a little clarification to that, to Greg Morse, Morse Engineering. The proposal is to take down the building and actually put up fewer units, whether it's four or five. We're actually proposing to put up three units in the new building. And it is a reduction in bedrooms. We just installed a tight tank with the Board of Health at this property. The tight tank was designed to accommodate the existing building. A walkthrough was performed and there were eight bedrooms in the existing. Our proposal as reflected, again, being three units are two-bedroom units, so it results in six bedrooms total. So it is a reduction in unit count and a reduction in number of bedrooms on the site. So it is a reduction in unit count and a reduction in number of bedrooms on the site.
So from eight, so from eight to six.
Correct. I can, I can walk you through the plan and the existing non-conformities if you'd like. Referring, referring to the plan, Glades Road is at the bottom of the page. The property line is in bold. This is, the existing building is located centrally on the site here. Along the southern boundary of the property, there's a ten-foot wide right-of-way to the property out back that had been tampered with. As attorney McKinnon had said, the existing building is located in the middle of the property, constructed in nineteen twenty per the assessor's cards. We have it as a four-unit building, and that building itself is non-conforming with respect to the front and the side yard setbacks. It actually approaches over the side yard setback or over the side lot line on the northern side. And in the front, it's existing at four point two feet along Glades Road. The lot itself is non-conforming. The lot itself is non-conforming with respect to frontage. It has a total of forty-five point one-six feet of frontage, the requirement being a hundred in this district. Lot width, again, being a lot width requirement of a hundred feet. The existing building has a lot width of forty point eight feet in lot area, ten thousand being the requirement, the existing lot area being three thousand ninety-three. The use, again, is non-conforming as a multifamily. Looking at the proposal, what we propose to do is we propose to take down the existing building and put up a new one. This bold line represents the outline of that new building. That new building would be pre-two-bedroom units. It would be elevated above the floodplain, and it would increase all of the existing non-conforming setbacks. We'd be going from the encroachment currently on the northern lot line. We're now proposing a setback at a minimum of three feet along the Glades Road where the existing setback is at four point two feet. We're actually proposing a setback at four point three feet, pulling it back just slightly. The lot line to the south and the rear lot line do conform with zoning requirements. The proposal does include an increase in floor area, the existing building being twenty-seven hundred and sixty-six square feet. The new proposal is three thousand three hundred and eighty-eight square feet. It represents a twenty-two point four percent increase. We included in the application pictures of the existing building, and we included copies of the architectural plans as well.
I'll say.
the existing, right now, side yard setback is eleven point one, and you're going down.
That's on the left-hand side?
That's on the left, that's on the left-hand side.
Ten point two.
Going down to ten point two, the requirement being eight in this district.
Yep. one, one question I had is how come, it looks like the lot next door is on a common ownership, no?
It is.
I mean, I don't know, I had a question, if it was a merger issue because of the ten-foot.
No, we have that a lot of places in town, and then generally, under Mass law, a lot's a lot.
Separate structure on it.
Right, and it's not vacant land.
It's not vacant land, who's vacant land would merge.
Actually, I have a couple foot, well, my, Bob might help us out with this one too. One, because of the proximity of the frontage and the side setbacks, certainly the, what type of materials are you using in the siding of the house? Are they gonna have to be fireproofed?
Yeah, if you're within five feet of the adjacent building, you're gonna need a, a fire-rated wall and fire-rated window openings.
Assembly.
Whether or not that's five feet doesn't appear on this plan, I guess. Could be pretty close on the right-hand side.
Yeah, it looks like it's three footer, one section, then three foot two.
It's three foot to the property line, the question is how far is it to the next, to the, to the next building?
Yeah, it's just a line to this.
Gonna be close.
Yeah, the pictures show.
It's gonna be close.
Yeah. But I think also, if it's within five feet of the property line, then it goes in there, I think that.
Three feet is a lot line.
Because they changed, it used to be five feet, so.
We're, we're prepared to do the fire retardant system if it's applicable.
Yeah. My other question, and I think it's probably answered, I looked at the elevations, there's garage doors on the ground floor. You're gonna need one space, parking space per bedroom? And is that accommodated by the design?
It, it is, what we propose, the lower level here, this is in the AE floodplain, this isn't a velocity zone, but the AE zone. So we've elevated the first floor. The floodplain, I believe, is at elevation fifteen, the third floor is at elevation eighteen and a half. So we provide more than enough free board. What that allows us to do is it allows us to take that lower level, the garage space, if you will, and enclose that with flood vents, so that what we're accommodating on the front of the building is we're accommodating two garage doors to get two cars end on end for the first unit, two cars end on end for the second unit. At the back of the property, there was a deck proposed off of the back, and there were spaces for two cars under the deck. So we do accommodate one space per each. This plant would also be subject to planning board approval with a site plan review and a year outcome.
So the current multifamily property is in compliance with parking, or it is not?
No.
And your proposal is that the new multifamily property will comply with parking?
Yes.
Okay, so that's, even though it's not in our standard chart, you're actually, you're removing another non-conformity?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And one thing on the elevation, Doris Crary, the owner, and also a member of the Situate CRS Committee, a member many years, is the fact that when you elevate a structure three feet higher than the base flood elevation that's required, that is where you will get a significant break in your flood insurance premium. If you don't go the three feet, you pay the same amount, as though we never did all of this work to elevate it and not keep it from, from flooding. So on structures, it can make a huge difference, I mean, as in thousands of dollars.
Sure.
So I felt bad for the other couple that only went a foot.
Ms. Crary, could you just, for the record, give us your street address?
Yes, we own Eight Oceanside Drive in Situate.
No, where, where do you live, though?
Eight Oceanside Drive in Situate, yeah.
Because I thought somewhere I saw on here, on the, on the assessor's card.
Yeah, the assess, that's my sister-in-law who pays our bills.
Got it. Jeez, I won't.
Yeah, but she uses our money.
Okay, that makes sense then, okay. Well, I can say I was by there today, and this is gonna be a huge improvement to the neighborhood, so it's good to see it being done.
Yeah. That's how we feel.
Is it on town, Sue?
And I only wish there'd be no tight tank.
I'm sorry.
That's, that's a.
That's, will you, I know it's rated for eight bedrooms. Will you be, see if you could increase that beyond six?
No, so what, what we did is we designed a tight tank because there were septic issues at this property over the past several years. We installed a temporary tight tank, is what we're calling it, with the hopes that as this project moves, moves forward, we'll convert that tight tank into a septic tank, and we'll be able to site a leaching field under the building between the pilings. So physically wasn't enough space outside of the existing building, but now we've gained that much area by elevating.
Are there questions? Yes, just your name and address, please.
I'm owner of eighty-nine Glades Road.
Okay, so you're to the left.
Across us, no.
Well.
Oh, yeah.
Right next door.
The little tiny one.
Yeah, so I agree it's gonna be a wonderful addition to raising it and adding something, but I do have several questions. I do know that the property is, it would have to be firewall, because it is certainly, I wanna say not even three feet between the houses. The question I do have is the height of the elevation, I have not been on to the two plans, I just got home around six thirty tonight. So the elevation of the, the structure itself will go comedy field higher than you.
Sure. So what we've proposed is a three-story building. What's there is a three-story building, but it's built at grade. The new building is three stories that are elevated due to the flood. The max height allowed under the bylaw is forty feet. We're coming in just shy of that, right around thirty-nine feet. We included a couple of sections through the building, and I can show you the elevation. If you're referring to the architecturals on page A two, this is the, this is the front of the building here. This would be looking at it from number eighty-five, I don't think there's a view from your.
No.
This is the view from your house, right here. You'd be looking at the side of the building on page A two point one.
Right, my house is only two there, so I've been looking at.
Correct.
But I'm, I'm only concerned about really the parking issue, having six lots, and then you're also proposing another deck.
So the parking, referring to our architecturals, page A two, you'll see that on the front of the building, we have two garage doors, two garage doors here, so that in the front of the building.
My property is still here to the right?
Your property is right here, correct. So you'd be driving under this building with parking spaces for unit one, under the building for parking spaces with unit two. And looking at the side of the building from your property, that space is, you know, it's enclosed space, you're not looking at the side of cars.
This is, this is the, the other driveway that goes down into the back of the.
Back two, parking spaces are where cars currently park for the property, in that back area. It's just we're proposing a deck off the back of the building. You know, that deck is elevated up at the first floor elevation, again, being at elevation eighteen. This site, the ground surface is typically around elevation ten, so you have eight feet of space under the deck to park two cars. Again, that's where they currently park on the site.
So I also have a question regarding the septic, so the new septic that was just put in last month is now going to be taken out?
No.
I think he mentioned that right now, they're gonna try to come back with another septic proposal to put it underneath the house at a later date. They haven't approached the Board of Health yet on, on that, that's my understanding.
Correct, what was installed was, was a tight tank, and that tank fills up and it gets pumped out on a regular basis. That tank, as we developed the design plan for the septic, that tank would remain in place. It's just it would now have a leaching field attached to it. That leaching field would be under the proposed building, so that rather than pumping out the affluent, it would be going into a standard leaching field and infiltrating into the ground.
And that would be underneath the garage?
If approved. I see you rolling your eyes just a little bit.
No, I, I know you're saying it for.
Yeah, I mean.
Any other questions? Yes?
Mayor Tegan, I own the property, we own the property together, ninety-one eighty-nine Glades Road. I have a question about the deck, would there be decks just on the first level?
There'd be balconies on second and third level, and a larger deck on the first floor levels.
No, it looks, it looks like they're all the same, aren't they?
No, but I think the large deck was just on the first floor.
Oh, this, oh, over the, over the, yeah, I see what you're talking about, yes.
Sheet A two shows the dimensions, and this here is the first floor elevation with the, a larger deck on the back of the building. That second and third level do have small, again, balconies, but they are not of the same size.
And that's on the, the back side, the marsh side?
This is the back on the marsh side, correct. So the large deck on the back of the building, the second level and third level having balcony structures. This is on the, the back side.
So basically, they're looking right into our yard.
Correct, it's on, it's on the back side of the building.
So it's up over the fence, we have a fence, they're not, so it'll be up over the fence, looking directly into our yard. So I just wanna go on record, I proposed the decking part of that plan.
Yeah, I think they were probably trying to accommodate the parking, so they had to eliminate or raise or elevate the deck to get cars in that area, that's what.
Does the garage in the back, is that part of eighty-five?
This garage here, no, that's the property in the back, that's off.
Eighty-three rear.
Who does it belong to, Greg?
It's a rear of butter.
It's part of Glades Road LLC, the Joyce.
The Joyce property.
Which is where?
There's another residence, I believe, right here that they own.
Yeah.
Here, but that's a, a garage, it's not a residence.
It's not eighty-five, it's not part of eighty-five, okay.
No, it's not. Eighty-five slot line is about two feet off the back of that.
Oh, okay, I do see, it's just not bolted, okay.
Any other questions? Any comments from the board or any other? So it seems to me they're kinda giving up some of their rights, the number of units going from four to three.
I don't think they're gonna miss them.
No.
No, it's a huge improvement, and it's gonna be.
Allow, they're gonna have parking spaces on the property for the number of units they have.
It'll be nice.
Back there. If you could address the fire on the sidewalls and block just so for allowing for the.
Do we have a motion?
Move on the, on the application for a special permit at eighty-seven Glades Road. I move with board on the existing property is non-conforming with respect to lot area, frontage, front yard setback, lot width, and also non-conforming by use.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, I, I'm sorry to interrupt. As I go through some of the material here in the bylaw, there may be an issue of height on this building. I'm, I'm looking at the design, and the height is given as slightly less than forty feet to the ridge. There's no dimension given to the eaves. Let me get back to where I was reading. The maximum height in a residential district, which this is, is thirty-five feet, which is measured halfway between the eaves and the ridge. Without scaling these drawings and not having that dimension, I don't think shown anywhere that I've been able to find quickly, I'm not sure that this isn't a couple of feet higher than is allowed.
Such a shallow pitch.
Right. There is an exception that was put in to cover buildings that were elevated. However, the exception doesn't apply to new buildings, it only applies to existing buildings that are elevated.
Okay.
If we had to, we'd keep a wall. Would that cover it?
I'm sorry?
I said if we had to, we could keep a wall and elevate it.
No.
Uh, yeah, yeah, doesn't work. They've tried that before.
Here we go. A seven.
Where are you, my pen?
A seven on the, on the architecturals. And I'm not sure it gives a total, but we could do the math.
Well, if you drew the last, the last. Well, if you do the last, the last three foot three inches and subtract that from the thirty-nine, you're left with the thirty-five.
Looks like a thirty-five and a half, or, I'm sorry, three feet five inches.
From the eaves to the ridge, is that how you calculate it?
That's how I'm reading this, so that makes you correct, right?
No, that's pretty close, that's top of Joyce, so yeah, that's pretty close.
So does it mean it's good or it's bad?
So, no, it's too high.
Too high.
The Joyce is another foot in thickness, because the eve measured to the bottom of the Joyce.
Well, you're measuring top of Joyce to top of ridge, that three foot five, Greg.
Right, but then you subtract, you add another foot to get to the bottom of your-
You're still under, you're under four and a half.
It's only seven inches. It's a two by eight, so that's eight inches, but-
I would like, I would like to see that, you know, defined.
Yeah. Maybe we can write that in the decision so that the final, hopefully, with the eve elevation and roof elevation can comply.
Yeah, there certainly would be room to reduce the height of the ceilings. These are all in excess of eight feet, the ceilings themselves, we could drop those down several inches on each of the floors, but we could provide an amended plan or include it as a condition.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not saying this can't be done, but I'm saying it needs, needs a little tweak.
So do we need to condition that? I mean, I thought that was just a building code thing, that we don't, we don't-
Well, it's a zoning bylaw thing.
Okay.
It's in the zoning bylaws. It's both.
That it conforms at height.
Okay.
Again, would you be able to do that then?
Yeah, if that was part of the condition, that we provide a documentation showing overall the height in conformance, that would be fine, which we're not asking for really-
At the permit, at permitting, it doesn't have to come back to us.
No.
That's what I thought, that's what I said.
Yeah, no, that's, that's right, that's what would be confirmed, that, you know, it meets the regulations.
I mean, this board has permitted houses that have not provided plans. That's why I'm wondering why we even have to deal with it, because-
Because if we cite these plans and we approve these plans, we're approving an extension of that.
Well, it does say not for construction all over it.
If we cite the plans-
Right.
-to be constructed as cited in the plans, then we would be approving the height.
We want to cite that plan.
And we don't want to do that. We're citing this plan.
Yeah.
Which is why, in the past, I've suggested we not cite construction plans.
Use our construction plans, huh? So, yeah, whatever, however it needs to be done.
Yeah, I just don't, I don't want you to approve something that I will then have to not approve.
Right. So in continuing the, I listed the nonconformities, further the board, that the proposed reconstruction of the structure as shown on the plan by Morse Engineering dated four seventeen eighteen, it will, does it reduce any nonconformities?
No.
Then in all other respects, the structure will conform to current zoning bylaws. Further, we will define that the proposed reconstruction is not more substantially detrimental to the neighborhood and that the existing structure, than the existing structure, and that all respects it conforms to section nine fifty point three of the zoning bylaw and that the special permit be granted.
What else?
Conditioned on the final plan, define the height within current zoning restrictions.
Follows in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. This is Curry, I hate to go back to the address again, but on the front of this, you still have, you have Halifax.
Yeah, that's my mailing address for the town tax records and tax bills and all that. I try to correct it and have them, when I'm doing things like this, not send it there because then I rely upon a phone call, but that is where it's listed on all of the records, water bills and everything to have them get paid.
Resident, Ocean, Ocean.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are we getting a short reset?
We're going to take a five-minute reset, we'll be right back. You've got just set up for a break. Sounds like a plan.
I'm waiting.
No panic.
Did you ask Dan, Annie, is, Dan, are you still here? You going to write that?
I will.
Thank you.
Just email it to her.
You can step a little couple more. How long can this go for? Now I'll stick around. If we're going to stay at home.
Jerry, how's it going?
All good.
Is it a little warm in here? I don't want to have any party, I just want to go.
Yeah.
It's actually here.
Yeah, you're dark.
You want to sit there?
Yeah, Ed and I passed notes generally during the meeting. I said you wouldn't do that.
Yeah, you want to keep it or?
That's what I kept on my own table. I just took names from work, and I-
Any objections? No, your honor.
I walked out there, I walked back in here, smells a little bit like a locker room.
Yeah, it's like thirty degrees warmer in here.
Yeah, is it?
Yeah.
I could tell because I saw people in the hallway.
It's a little ventilation.
Ed, we're lowering the bar for historical figures? It seems like those were just old guys who had jobs. The guys who were referenced in the historical commission. Older employees.
We appreciate the welcome.
One hundred percent.
But, as I said, when we transferred deeds to, there was, in what he gave us, there was something about mergers, properties merging out of these.
In another ninety years, jobs could be more historical than one of those guys.
If you want me to show something, just cue it. Yeah.
You don't think so?
All right. These are the same folks who all, the Oceanside.
Is that the one at the bottom of Turner? That gets smoked every storm? That place?
It works, it works, it's a manager.
I'm good, thank you.
But there has to be, it can't be.
It does. I open a window.
Sounds like a locker room.
It really does. A lot. I would open all of the windows, I would plus a hole in the wall if it was up to me. My clothes smell better than this room after the Situate fun run. I was just in the men's room, it smelled better.
That one's a trick one. No screen?
No, I got screens. It's hot and not that fresh in here. We're going to open some windows.
Oh, shoot, and I didn't do what I should have been doing by switching out.
Oh, whatever. You got time.
Oh, go ahead.
Oh, look. Look at that, it wasn't even a boy scout.
Somewhat disadvantaged, I can see.
Kind of a guy, I've heard that right there. Might have been one of my favorite shows. Hopefully it doesn't get any warmer in here.
Could you give that to Annie?
Of course. Here you go. I don't know. All right, anyone else in the hall that wants to be in here?
No, we got to wait for Bob.
Oh, yeah. No, Bob's here. He just didn't want the plan in his space.
All right, now we are ready for our fourth applicant tonight, continuation.
Herringbrook Meadow LLC requests a modification to the comprehensive comment for Herringbrook Meadow LLC pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter Forty-B, Section Twenty, Twenty-three. Change, the request for change is on file with the CBA for the project located at one twenty-six and one thirty-two, Chief of Constitution Highway, Assessors Map, Fifty-Eight Block One, Parcels Eight, Eight, and Five.
Thank you. Jeff, if you want to just let us know what you're going to be, briefly what you're going to be going over tonight.
Sure, yeah. Well, I'll be brief, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for the record. Jeff Angler from SEB Herringbrook LLC. We don't have a formal presentation tonight, to be honest with you, just to bring you up to speed, and what's on the screen really is just for illustrative purposes, if anybody wants to point to the plan, or we have some other things, but our last hearing was quite a bit of time ago, and we'd like to think we used the time productively and constructively. We had a very detailed meeting with Woodard and Curran to review all of their initial comments that were presented, I believe, at the last hearing. We submitted a memo to them on March twenty-seventh, which, and the board is in receipt of all of the correspondence. So our response to their requests, concerns, I'd say was, you know, let's call it seventy-five percent of the way there. We then went back based on their review of our updated plans, and from our perspective, we believe we addressed the remainder of their outstanding issues. We submitted another memo dated April twentieth, which highlights all of the changes, modifications, updates to the plan, and then, as you know, Woodard and Curran submitted their findings in a May fourth memo. So I think our hope tonight is to hear from Woodard and Curran, answer, our civil engineering team is obviously here, answer any questions. We've added a lot of detail, we made, I wouldn't say profound changes to the plan, but we did a lot to satisfy and to appease, from our perspective, Wood and Curran's concerns about the previous plan set. So that's really all I have. We look forward to answering questions, and with that said, I'll turn it over.
Also, maybe we should, here, we're going to cover Chris, just to bring us up to date.
Yeah, except I have to admit, I have no idea why I don't have that, I don't know if I've misplaced it, but I don't have a copy of Wood and Curran.
Okay, email.
Oh, was it through an email?
Yeah.
No.
I'm telling you, I don't print those frigging emails anymore.
I have an extra copy of two.
Do you? That would, if you would, I mean, I'm happy to give it back to you.
It has a couple notes on the cover page. I'd also say, I would be remiss if the memos were submitted, but I also think-
With one of the memos, we submitted a hundred and fifty pages of documents and technical specifications and all of the technical detail that probably, other than Woodard and Curran and SciTech, no one in the room that's not a civil engineer is going to fully understand, but to be, per the request of the town, all the information that was communicated, all of the details, all of the updates, no matter how detailed and technical, were submitted to the town electronically and in hard copy. Those were requested and we submitted, I think, five full-size sets of everything, too, so.
And I'll say, it's very much appreciated.
And in advance, and in advance.
Yes, I did, I know, I saw that. Unfortunately, I read the March one first, and I thought, I wish I'd just read the April twentieth.
Would you have a little time just to kind of highlight where we're at with that? Yeah, just to bring us up to date on the board?
Certainly.
And there is, maybe some of the changes that were, that were made, and if there are any, any other requests that you need or-
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
If that's, if you need to turn that off, we can turn that off.
Yeah, I mean, if it's distracting, I can-
I think we're a good, I don't think we need to-
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Daniel Garson, I'm a senior principal at Woodard and Curran, and with me is Scott Salvucci, professional engineer from Woodard and Curran. Scott did the primary reviews, and I was basically supporting him. I'll just give a quick summary overview, and then Scott can go through some of the more specific comments and recommendations, and then we could certainly respond to any questions from the board. But as, as the applicant indicated, we met with them on March seventh, with the applicant and with SciTech, their engineers, to go over our initial comments on their original plan that was submitted, discuss more of the details of our comments, and requesting information, asking for either more details or clarifications, or in some cases, suggesting possible adjustments or modifications where we felt those were necessary. And it was a very productive meeting. I think they indicated at that meeting that they would address our comments and respond to us, either as we had indicated or providing additional information that they felt would clarify our questions, which they did, and Scott will go through those in more detail. But I think as a general conclusion that I'll share right up front, based on the revisions that the applicant made, based on the comments that we made, we feel that they addressed all the comments and either demonstrated and showed us through their revision and plan updates how they were addressing those requirements, and as we say in our comment letter, under the conclusions, we found that those additional updates were in compliance with our comments, with the requirements of the Massachusetts Stormwater Regulations and Standards, the Situate zoning bylaws, we felt were, were addressed, stormwater bylaws and regulations, and we also compared those to the wetland protection bylaws, and generally felt that they had met those requirements. There were a number of recommendations and suggestions that we made relative to possible conditions that the board could consider, and we specified those in our letter, and Scott will go through those. And in general, the applicant either complied with our recommendations or said that they were going to comply as part of their further submissions for the building permit. So we've, in our summary, highlighted which of those conditions that we recommend still need to be provided by the applicant, and in cases where they said they would provide them, we've noted that in our comment. So I think with that- So I think with that, that kinda gives the overview, and as I said, they have generally, from our review, complied with the technical and engineering requirements of the applicable bylaws.
And to review this, were there any concerns outside of this, or in this process that you still had, or most of those concerns were kinda met, or are going to be met?
Exactly. They were either met in this latest submission, or the applicant indicated they would be met as part of a later submission. Scott, you wanna maybe highlight some of the key things?
Yep. So, as, as stated, you know, we went through a couple iterations of comment, review, revisions through, from the applicant. And for the most part, as Dan mentioned, a lot of what we went through were the technical aspects, the engineering, the calculations, the detailed design. And to meeting the stormwater management standards, the applicant has taken those steps since the last hearing, since the last time we were in front of you. They've gone through those comments that we had, and I can just run through the stormwater management standards as, as kind of we mentioned last hearing, they, they were only meeting maybe one or two out of 10. Really, right now, they're meeting nine out of 10, and that ninth one is really just a comment of, we're going to be providing, the applicant will be providing that data prior to, you know, building permits and things of that nature. So, standard one, with no untreated discharges on site, that's been met. The applicant has a treatment system with deep sump, hooded catch basins, proprietary stormwater treatment unit, outlet to a riprap pad, and then also a grass conveyance swale prior to reaching any resource areas. So they have pretty much the same exact BMPs they had prior, but we've gotten some more detail. We've, we've gotten them to, to document how they meet those standards and the calculations and things, things like that, so that, that we've got the standards met for standard one. Standard two, they are controlling the peak flows from the overall site. Also, we've asked them to look at peak flows crossing neighboring properties if they do cross prior to reaching their design points at the edge of their property. And they have provided the calculations and data to, to prove that they are meeting and not creating higher flows, higher velocities, higher volumes across neighboring properties.
Just on the peak flows, is that, for example, a heavy rain for a couple days, tide, or both?
It's, it's a rain, it's a rain event.
Rain event.
Yeah, yeah, it's a rain event. Which, in a sense, they technically wouldn't have to really meet based on being subject to coastal storm flowage. But making sure that as it runs off to those areas across potentially neighboring properties, that they aren't making those conditions worse than pre-existing, so we've taken a look at those.
Can I ask you something else?
Yep.
And maybe I'm, maybe I didn't refer to it, Robert, but I thought I saw somewhere in this that they were asking for a waiver from standard two? Is there a different standard that, that the waiver is requested from?
The waiver may be in regards to the local bylaw, but...
It said, no, it said standard, and we don't have any standards in bylaws, I don't know.
Yeah, I'm not sure where you may have seen that.
I think on the checklist, the document, second one, standard two waiver request, because the project is located in, subject to coastal storm...
So, in a sense, they, yeah, they don't really have to meet this, this requirement according to Mass. DEP's handbook, because they're subject to coastal storm flowage. So I guess if that's what, checking the box to say that's a waiver, then that would be that, yes.
So it's not really a waiver. It's not like they have to comply and they don't wanna comply. It's, you're saying they don't have to comply?
They wouldn't have to comply, correct?
Okay.
So, in a sense, based, based on at least how I've read the standards, they, they've met what they need to meet for this site.
Alright.
For standard two, it's annual recharge to make sure that the groundwater is being recharged through the rain events that equal to pre-construction conditions. So post-construction, they've proved, proven through stormwater BMPs and infiltration devices that they will recharge the required amount at the site. For standard four...
Oh, can I stop you again?
Yep.
I just, and again, I think it's for the benefit of everybody, anybody watching, can you give a, just a real quick description or definition of recharge, what recharge means?
Yeah, so the rainwater that hits the ground now will soak in, a certain amount will soak into the soils, depending on if they're sandy soils, or different classifications of soils, and that factors into the calculations of what quantity of groundwater they need to make sure, rainwater infiltrates back into the ground. So in pre-construction conditions, it's, it's all wooded. It's just woods and meadows. So the groundwater's going in, and some, once it's saturated, it'll run off. Once they put impervious buildings and parking lots and things of that nature on there, nothing will infiltrate. So they need to capture runoff, treat it so that it's clean, and then put it into systems below ground, below those impervious surfaces that then still mimic what happens when rainfall would have hit woodlands and meadows and things like that, so. So they're making sure that the water that used to infiltrate in and recharge the groundwater still does in some fashion.
Okay. And is that something, is that mechanic, mechanically, or is that biologically? And I don't even know if those are appropriate terms.
No, it's, uh, no, it's just, it's just capturing the runoff, so it's really just the simple, when you see the water flowing down the gutter line in the street, hitting the catch basin, that's, you know, that's a storm system, not a sanitary sewer system. So storm system that, that then runs, pipes it to, usually maybe out to a pond or, or the ocean, but... So they're capturing that in a certain amount of that runoff. They're making sure that they treat it through stormwater BMPs, so it's clean, sand and oils and things like that. And then they're throwing, they're, they're piping it to underground chambers that then leach into the ground, as if the rainfall would have leached through the woods. It's now beneath a parking lot, but leaching in the same, in the same way.
And, and how is that set up to, like, take care of any pollutants like gas, oil, whatever?
So they are actually infiltrating off of the rooftops?
Yeah.
So...
Wouldn't have that.
And they won't have those issues?
Acid rain?
I'm not sure.
I guess, I guess that's not something that they're creating, so. Well, acid rain would still hit the ground if there was nothing there.
Right, yeah, just kidding. Okay, so it, so it goes in, and so we're not, recharge is, is talking about that, what comes off the roof, as opposed to...
You can, you can meet it in any way necessary, depending on your site. In this, in this site, they're grabbing it from the rooftops and infiltrating it, and in that sense, they won't have to meet the pre-treatment requirements that you might necessarily need to meet off of a parking lot.
Okay.
So, but in the same sense, with standard four, which is the next standard, treating whatever runoff you're going to discharge out to the resource areas or off your site, you need to treat anyways. So, which they do with their stormwater BMP best management practice treatment train of deep sump, hooded catch basins that can collect sediment before the, the water then pipes through the rest of the network. Proprietary stormwater units that have been designed and engineered to remove the stormwater pollutants prior to discharge. And then a riprap outlet pad that's used to reduce the velocities and the erosion, the erosive velocities coming out of the ends of the pipes during specific storm events. And then a grass swale that, providing minimal treatment, but it's a, it's a conveyance device, but it'll provide some treatment as well.
So is there, is there a requirement, I mean, do catch basins have to be cleaned? Would that be a part of the O&M?
That'll be a long-term O&M, which they will provide, and that's gonna be, you know, a condition that we recommend be there, obviously, that, that's, that's standard that they have not met. That's that one standard they have not met, and that's something that we've discussed with the applicant, that, you know, they, they were putting off until, you know, a later time.
It's not atypical, Sarah, for the O&M plan, which is, you know, kind of their written instructions on how they maintain it yearly to come in after the permit, but will get reviewed again by Woodard and Curran before building permits go out. So that's fairly typical, and I think that you've seen that in a number of comments in terms of what you guys wanna check a box on before you issue a decision, and what you wanted, what boxes you can wait to check before the building permit process, which would, when they get closer to 100% kinda design plans and get a, a more full package, which we, which the board will then send right back out to Woodard and Curran to review for, for that kinda stuff.
Yeah, when that time comes. So those take care of, standards three and four, in a sense, go hand in hand with that response, which are met. Standard five is, is not applicable to this site. It's not considered a land use with higher potential pollutant loads, based on the stormwater handbook. Standard six is applicable. The discharges will occur within a zone two, and they have met the specific, specific requirements for the treatment requirements based on being in a sensitive zone of that nature. So they have met that with their storm, their stormwater BMP treatment train. Standard seven is redevelopment. They're not, the applicant is not applying under redevelopment of the project, so that's not applicable. Standard eight is a construction period erosion settlement control plan, which they did provide that document. We did review that document. That was one that we asked, you know, they, they separate out to be a standalone document through construction that a contractor can have in hand based on, you know, their initial documentation that they, that we reviewed. So they've addressed those comments. They separated that out. They, they really added to what we were looking for and needed for construction period. A stormwater pollution prevention plan is something that's required by EPA when you're disturbing more than one acre. And that's something that they, again, will need to provide prior to construction, start of construction, and that's, again, not, not uncommon for, for the contractor to wait until it's, it's starting construction to provide that document. Standard nine is the long-term O&M plan that we touched upon, that they'll provide at a later date, so that's the one that they have not met at this point. And standard 10 was one that they had met previously. It's, it's simply a, a statement that, you know, their, their designs have not created any illicit discharges. And from what we've seen in the designs, we don't see any illicit discharges and illicit connections by any means of sewer, sewer and stormwater crossover. So that takes care of the, the 10 standards, so it's, it's in much better condition than it was last hearing. And as Dan mentioned, some of the remaining pieces within our review, we had some recommendations for conditions of approval for the board. And we listed those as part of our conclusion page within our, within our memo. So I can, I can touch upon those, and really, they, they don't heavily rely on the technical engineering that we've gone through. Really, what we were looking for within the stormwater management, the design, the technical aspects, they've really met what we were asking for in the engineering. These are more of the conditions of, of bylaws and the safety aspects, things like that. So concluded, condition number one that was, that was recommended was that the SWIP be provided to, stormwater pollution prevention plan, also known as the SWIP, be provided to the board and the conservation commission for review prior to construction. The O&M plan be provided for review. The waiver request for Section 470 Situate zoning bylaw be provided, or, or basically revalidated based on some of the initial hearings that were, that were, took, took place years ago. So that's something that the applicant discussed.
Should we reserve our questions for the end, or should we ask questions condition by condition? I'm open to either.
I think we should do it as it goes.
Condition by condition, you go through tandem by...
Yeah, so on that one...
Yep.
I know there's some difference of interpretation, we'll call it. There was obviously some form of waiver when a previous application was received. So I guess, Jay, from your point of view, where, your point of view, what do these guys need to do to comply with that condition?
So, this is one that, I think that the situation on the ground has changed, obviously. Given the, the change of the project, as well as the change in the resource area, because it's now all map flood. So I would say that it, it's open for discussion as a factor. It's not really so much of a technical issue, though, in my opinion, because I think that, again, in fairness to the applicant, they're getting the technical stuff taken care of. The elements of that bylaw that I think the board needs to focus on in terms of, of how it views it is kind of the policy side of it. So the technical stuff, SciTech did a good job of, of working with Woodard and Curran to take care of volumes and all that other stuff. You guys have a situation where you developed a policy document on what you want to see in these more sensitive areas. And I think it's up to the board to kinda decide more holistically, and this has obviously been, I don't wanna call it the elephant in the room, but the, the dominant issue that's affected this project from the beginning, how do all these issues regarding the sensitivity of this area because of the flooding, how does that factor into your overall view of it? The board, I think both Sarah and Ed in particular, have raised issues with how it's affected other applicants.
Sure.
In terms of that, so how you decide on that from a policy stuff, it's a harder question, but you have to make this fit into your overall goals for development within these areas, now that you know that this is an area that is certainly heightened scrutiny because of the, the change in the, in the flood, so.
And, and I guess my question is then for you guys, and tell me if it's a question you're prepared to answer or not. Putting aside for a moment that the bylaw has changed, and perhaps has gotten more stringent since these folks got an approval for the application in its prior form, does this application, and I don't even know if your review compared the prior project to this one, but does this application make the flooding situation worse or better at the site than the prior application that was approved by the Housing Appeals Committee?
I, I believe that they did, in a sense, reduce their fill on the site, if I'm remembering. Their, some of the documents that they submitted with the three buildings from years ago, and their fill, their fill to the two buildings now, I believe is less. But really, in a, in a coastal setting like this, the flooding, the way it's, it's viewed based on being so close to the ocean is that it's gonna be a de minimis effect of filling these areas. It's, it's gonna make a minute...
The ocean's gonna do what the ocean wants to do.
If anything, and, yes, exactly, and, and dropping a, a pebble into the lake won't change the, the elevation by any means.
So, am I correct, and I'm honestly asking, the application in its current form isn't clearly worse for flood issues than the previous application that was approved by the Housing Appeals Court?
Not that, not that I could see. We didn't really break that down.
Right, and I understand that.
It wasn't really a central component of the litigation in terms of examining it, because again, we were, even though there was some local flood jurisdiction under your zoning bylaw, it obviously wasn't in the 100-year flood plane, so there was not a robust litigation of that issue.
So it wasn't a focus of the first application?
Yeah, and, and as Scott has said, there's, when the ocean comes, the ocean is coming. I think that as it may affect certain other things, you have some enhanced scrutiny now, because now there's no dispute that pretty much the whole area is flooded. So while the technical aspects, I think they, a lot of them are resolved, you still have other issues. And I think if, if you look at things like their comments to Number 38, which is, I think, on page 18 of the Woodard and Curran thing, this impacts some of the other areas that you spent a lot of time on, like the emergency management plan, which has been a hot-button issue, and maybe you wanna see that before.
Of course.
As well as the, the fire chief has expressed some concern in a flooding condition where he can only get to one side of the building. So those are, they're related, but on, from, from the engineering side, I mean, these guys have taken it as far as they can. Now, the, the fire access is a separate issue, and then just your general feelings on how you want to consider a project that is going to acknowledge, knowledgefully flood.
Right, so that, this condition, and so when I was looking, some of these conditions are, there's something physical that we're going to achieve or be able to review that will satisfy or not a condition, but is this one maybe more of an overriding concern that affects other portions of our review and other conditions?
Well, I think, I think you get into the area of less so checking some of the technical boxes in terms of meeting the DEP standards, or some... They also reviewed the local wetland regulation and found that they, they were satisfied with that. I had actually asked some questions in between, and I think that was satisfied. So some of the other technical issues in addition to stormwater, now I think you're in the world more of how this... in the world more of how this affects your overall view of development within sensitive areas, which is obviously as much of a hot-button issue in Situate as it is anywhere.
Sure.
Certainly on the south coast as well as the Cape. So that, you're getting more into how this town views its development goals and that side of the zoning bylaw. Not everything about a zoning bylaw is technical. Some of it is more...
And that answers my question. I wanted to understand, there isn't something that they could just put in front of us or not that makes a yea or nay on that condition? It's more nuanced than that.
I would say, yeah, there is slightly more nuance here on that. With the exception, perhaps, of kind of the issue regarding the fire chief who...
Oh, sure.
Yeah.
Which is another condition.
Right.
Sure.
Is there anything that has come down from HAC that dictates that we have to give them a waiver from 470?
Well, only, only from the standpoint that, you know, you have to weigh these things. I mean, they've achieved technical compliance under engineering standards.
Right.
The other element of review of potential waivers is how they fit into some of the other goals behind zoning. Obviously zoning does have a component that is technical in nature, and that's why we bring engineers in. But there's a whole other component of zoning, which is achieving good planning consistent with the longstanding goals of the town through their various planning documents. And you all see it more than I do and more than the applicant does. So that side of it also factors into waivers. I think we all know and appreciate that the Housing Appeals Committee probably looks at those more esoteric waiver issues with a less sympathetic eye towards municipalities. But there are several cases coming out of them where if a town has a demonstrated history along more of the policy side and has, and has really shown that it's been consistent in that regard, that there's a consideration there. I don't want to, though, get into what HAC is because you have an applicant before you who's done a lot of stuff. I'd rather not focus on HAC and focus on how we work with Jeff and his crew to resolve issues around what you say is the policy goals. You're at that point in this hearing where you dealt with the technical stuff, Jeff and his crew have been really good and forthcoming on this, and now you're at the point where what do you like, what do you don't like? And I think that that's, that's kind of the world you're in now. You know, I think we've been the beneficiary, again, of a lot of cooperation from Jeff's crew on this, so.
Can I comment on that? I mean, I understand what the Board is, where you're going, but if we don't have a waiver to 470, we have no project. And we've just spent the last six months working in good faith and have satisfied every technical question that's been asked of us, many of which under 40B we don't even have to answer. But my charge to my team and myself has been, let's be collaborative and cooperative and do that. And we've spent, and I know the Board and people in the room don't care nor should they, but we've spent a ton of money on our peer review consultant and our own team getting this right, and we've satisfied and demonstrated that. So to then turn around and say, well, we have a local concern and it trumps all the technical satisfaction, to me is, I would, that would be tough to swallow considering what's gone on the last six months and the effort we've gone to, to show that we meet all of the various applicable regulations. So I would be really disappointed. I know you're not, your objective is not, not to make Jeff not disappointed, but hopefully you understand my position because we have worked really hard and there's been real issues raised, and we have satisfied all of those technical issues. And let me make it clear also that the things we did not satisfy were not because I said we're not doing that. It's because it makes more sense, as your counsel had said, once you go through all the construction documents, you're more equipped to submit a good O&amp;M plan and submit good because it's more accurate as opposed to trying to do it now. So anything we haven't done is just a deferment, and we would be comfortable with the condition saying, we're not going to give you, you know, an occupancy permit or whatever it is until you've satisfied the Board and likely Woodard and Curran would be your reviewing entity because they have familiarity. So that's our position on these local waivers. We need them to do the project, and that's, I can't say it any clearer than that.
But let's also be clear, waivers are not a zero-sum game, and Jeff, you know this too. I mean, it's not so binary that, that if you have a concern that's built up around your zoning bylaws or your master planning or anything else they're seeking a waiver on, it doesn't necessarily have to be you get it or you don't get it. There's full compliance with that bylaw which would negate the project if it's not waived. Then there's, then there's complete waiver which allows them essentially to do what they want to do with impunity. And then there's, we express a concern that is, arises under 470 and other bylaws in town, and because of that concern, we are willing to give a waiver to allow a project to go forward, provided however that the concerns that arise under it are mitigated by X, Y, and Z. And it's not for me to come up with X, Y, and Z. But, so I think there, I think what I'm trying to express is on the policy side of that.
100%.
And don't, I'm not sitting here suggesting one way or the other that you grant or don't grant, that's up to you guys, but there's that middle world where most 40Bs end up, where you guys have a large concern, which has been the biggest issue in this, whether it be the emergency response plan with the flooding or the issue, or just general flooding. This Board has been dealing with this bylaw and applicants under it for a long time. So you're best suited to say, okay, I got a project out here, what can we do to improve it so that it comes closer to meeting our goals? Or can we? Or it's fine, just the way it is, let's give them the green light. So those, and they, all those ideas exist along a spectrum. And the great number of 40B projects don't exist on the far ends of the spectrum, they exist along the spectrum. So I, Jeff, I'm not suggesting that it is so binary. I'm suggesting that the Board has some, has some leeway to start working with you if they have further concerns.
Jeff, just one second, just to clarify my question, and I want to make sure I was clear on where I was coming from. In looking at these conditions that we see here, many of them are, if they're not black and white, they're almost black and white. You can achieve something, our consultants can say that you've met an engineering standard, you can get the fire chief to come in here and say that I've developed a plan and I think that this plan is good. This one stood out as different, and I was looking to get the lay of the land. Your answer was as I expected, that that one isn't quite as clear, and there's other things that go into it, and then there's a spectrum. I certainly wasn't going down the path that you were concerned about.
Right. No, I appreciate the clarification. Let me make an example, you know, maybe it's, maybe it's relevant, maybe it's not. Clearly flooding has been a big issue in this consideration and what's going to happen, and, you know, if the garage floods, what's going to happen to the cars? We talked to the commercial landlords, to residential multifamily, we went to the, to this town hall, talked to the building department. Do you know there's not one emergency management plan on record or any of these landlords or owners to move vehicles during the floodplain? Not one that we could find. I can't sit here and say one does not exist, but we researched it pretty closely because, and we reached out to landlords, I can tell you who we spoke to, doesn't exist. We would be comfortable, as we've shown in the plans, to provide an emergency management plan. We have an auxiliary parking area on our site to move vehicles. To me, that is going above and beyond to address a concern that this Board has communicated, and we would be comfortable with that condition. And it would be the first of its kind in the town of Situate because all of those other owners in the floodplain and many other people have...
How many built before the delineation of the floodplain? 100%. Yeah. So it is an apples and oranges thing. I get your point, but it is apples and oranges.
Are you telling me there hasn't been one house built since the new floodplain delineation?
I think the court has specifically told them they can't.
But what do those people do? Or what does anybody in town do during floodplain? But what do people in the floodplain do now?
On our first hearing, I said to you, I was concerned because the court has told us that what we granted a permit to build could not be built. And as I've said, the issue is what's the court's position if we grant this and it's appealed? It's been my concern from the beginning of the hearing. I appreciate your cooperation. I appreciate that, I like the plan much better than the old plan that was here, all of the things that I've said in the past. But in terms of, it is apples and oranges, we have, no one else is building a garage in the floodplain there to hold 70 cars. A single pre-existing dwelling, single-family dwelling that floods, they've been making arrangements for that since the house was built. I mean, we have houses that are 100 years old that are in the floodplain, and people have been living in them, and they've moved their cars. I assume when they first built them, they moved their wagon. I don't, you know, it's, it's not, it's not the same thing. We recognize that this project has some concerns about flooding. It does, it floods. That's been the gorilla in the room.
And we haven't disputed that, and I think it's important to recognize, and it's not this Board's responsibility, and you had nothing to do with it. But before we filed the application, we had three meetings with the town and many people in various departments, and shared these plans in terms of, hey, listen, there's a permit, we'd like to do something different. And we were encouraged to move forward. It wasn't exactly like this, but it was building type, same unit layout, more or less. I mean, we've gone above and beyond relative to some of the engineering stuff, but they were focused more on what's going on above the ground. You guys didn't sit in on that, so I'm not saying that you did. But once again, you know, there was, there was, we got, we took our cues from the town relative to coming forward, and now we're, we're all in. I mean, our chips are on the table, we're all in, and that's how it's going to be moving forward, so.
Yeah. I mean, we also, we also had mentioned earlier about the possibility of flood to the garage. You know, I, I still, I'm just myself, but I know all two things that the Board has been consistent on and worried about is the flooding. We've come back to that question several times through the whole thing, is what do you do with 70 cars? I don't know that off-site parking or another one still gets 70 cars out of the garage.
We've showed it does.
But I mean, think about it, logistically, if you've got 10 people out of town, what are you going to do with those 10 cars? How do you make arrangements to get the keys? If it's not in the house?
We can, it's a, it's a management plan. We can submit that.
Yeah. John, I think, I certainly had in my mind that as part of that concern, we would require a plan go into place. I mean, it's not, I've lived in a condo building that had a valet, and that valet was either a function of space or maybe it was a permitting requirement. Or I have two sets of keys to my car, I think that's part of the emergency management plan or the parking plan that we, I think would be well in our right to require. Now, whether that's sufficient to get us over 470, I'm not saying that, but I think the logistics of getting the cars out of the garage in a potential flood event is difficult, that's not our problem, and I think that they've shown a willingness to deal with that difficulty. Now...
Well, it's partly your problem, but I mean...
Well, I mean, I mean, the logistic difficulty and the cost involved in it isn't, we have the ability to put that on the applicant, and they've at least said that they have an openness to talk about in incurring that and subjecting themselves to that. Now, whether it gets us there, I don't know. We haven't talked about specifics of it yet.
That's why I think if you look at condition 38, although there's a lot that can happen post-permit, a lot, and that's typical. I'm wondering if, and this is the comment that Scott and Dan put in, if that issue, because it's been discussed a lot, is something that you may want to check that box before you close that hearing because it's been a significant issue to you. I mean, in addition to some of the other basic flooding issues, I don't know. I mean, that's put out there.
Yeah. I mean, for me, it seems like where the cars are and where the cars aren't, and where they go and where they don't go, and the pollution from the cars is a major issue here. And, yeah, I think, I would like to hear some specifics as to two days in advance of a major storm. We know it's coming, there's a good chance that the garage is going to flood as much as it's going to flood. And what do they do? How do we know that they're going to do it? What's in place so that they can and that they will? And get into specifics.
I just want to say, Jeff, in response to your statement, which you're obviously very passionate about, I think I was equally passionate when this hearing started citing the Foam Road case and the Dougherty case from the SJC, and providing you through your attorney copies of those cases. I put it right out there the very first night, and I haven't forgotten about it. And you may think I have made my mind up way back day one, but I think that I have demonstrated by questions that I presented to you, I've read everything that you've provided. And if I had an, and let me tell you, I have a lot better things to do with hours, hours worth of time. I probably put four hours at least reviewing these documents. I have pages of notes. I understand, no, you're right, I skipped a lot of, well, skipped all of the technical stuff, but I read the narrative stuff. I've looked at this stuff carefully, but in the back of my mind, to the point where it really literally makes me figure, you know, actually sick to my stomach, I think about, you know, Marianne Dougherty, who we told couldn't use the property that she's owned in her family for years and years and years, dozens of years, you know, decades. The Foam Road people that weren't allowed to build.
We told them they could. The court said...
Well, I didn't tell them they could. I would have voted against it.
The court turned them over.
But, I wasn't there that night, but I would have definitely not voted. I read this as, how do we get beyond this? And how do we deal with the, you know, the safety issues with respect to residents that were put in on the edge of the, on the edge of the floodplain? I stood in this property on March 1st and felt the ocean water coming in, just racing in, racing in on, on the, on the property, and saying, are we doing the right thing? You know, does this make sense? I read the stuff, I, in fact, we'll get to it, the question about, I didn't quite understand the North River watershed, a potential withdrawal of your permit to discharge or something. I've read all of that, and I'm concerned about that. I'm concerned for all the reasons they say it needs to be concerned. It's a beautiful project, and I've given you all the benefit of the doubt through the whole thing by reading all of this, trying to say, if this, if this goes forward, how can we best prevent, you know, protect everything? I'm thinking about the people that are going to live there. Are their lives at risk? I'm concerned they are. I'm concerned about the, you know, the quality of the environment. I'm concerned about the money you've spent. I've thought about that. And this morning, I can tell you the point, I was walking from one, from my office at my house into the hallway and thinking, I cannot think about that. I have got to put the money that your company has put into this out of my head. That's not a proper consideration for me. But I tell you, in all truthfulness, I thought about it. And it, that part makes me sick too, because none of us like to spend money that we think didn't need to be spent or shouldn't have spent or got wasted. It's, it's a much better project than, than the old one, but I don't know yet.
Well, can I comment on that? For one, and I apologize, I didn't for one second, I don't think I represented, that I didn't think the Board has spent a lot of time or read the things or taken this seriously. I know you have, and I also for one second don't think you made your mind up at the first hearing. I hope you didn't. So, but we're kind of, you know, at the come-to-Jesus point of the public hearing where we're either having a project or we don't. And I really, really, really hope we can see eye to eye because this I do know, my money's not wasted because, as I said, we're all in. And you guys have a responsibility to the town to assess your exposure, and is it, is it good money to spend and hire attorneys to fight a case at the HAC that you didn't lose once, you lost twice? And oh, by the way, I don't know as much law as your counsel, but I know enough to know that we're going to be in a much stronger position than you are. And I don't want to go to that. It's bad for you, it's bad to us, but if you say, or start doing conditions that, you know, just make the project a shadow of itself, it's not, it's just, it's not going to work. And that's why we... And that's why we've worked so hard to demonstrate the plan that's before you. And if you need a, a, and if we need to require the owners to leave a second set of keys in our condo association and provide that, we can do all that. But if you say you can't park cars in the floodplain or stuff like that, or you can only park half or whatever, it's going to require us to totally redo the whole plan. I don't even know if it'll work. And it's just, that, that's why we've spent so much time and effort to work with these guys, to show that the plan works, that it meets all the regulations. There's lots of stuff being built across the state in the floodplain. That's why we designed the garage we did, because it meets code for, for, for construction in the floodplain. Our architect, who's from Marblehead, builds a lot of things in the floodplain. It was the most important issue from get-go in designing this and dealing with this, and it hasn't changed. So I just implore you to, to think about that as we move forward because, I mean, in a way, our interests, you know.
Are there any, I mean, are there any projects like this in a marsh area that floods, that is going to be tens of thousands of yards of fill that you can point to and give us some guidance on it?
I mean, I don't know. I haven't researched it.
Is it, they're being built in the floodplain all over the place, you know, across the Commonwealth? But I, I, I think this is a pretty unique project.
Right.
I mean, it is, there's a, for all the reasons I've stated in the past.
Let me just, let me just say a couple of things and no disrespect, Jeff. There are projects being built in the floodplain. I'm going to suggest that any coastal community by law, first of all, they have to have a floodplain district by law, or people that live in the floodplain cannot get flood insurance. So this really can only exist with waivers and generally only through 40B at this scale. So taking that aside, I just want people to understand the process. We are here, Jeff has given an extension through the 21st, so it's either we end tonight or we get further extensions if there's further discussion to be had. We're at the, and I just made a, a point a little bit ago. If there is discussion of conditions, and Jeff has suggested that they have very little leeway on this, it's incumbent upon the board, if you have thoughts on what those conditions may be, if they affect the financial pro forma that they have, to raise those issues soon, like get, get a feel.
In the next 15 minutes.
Well, today would be a good start. And then, then it's up to the applicant to say, we can work with you on this and that and not on this, and that this is where the discussion and 40B and all the guidance documents going back to the 60s and 70s has said that this is what parties should do, is discuss these things in good faith after you get through the technical stuff. It's built in, it's baked in. And if they say that we can't afford to do it and you still want to push that issue, then we have a discussion over the numbers. Uh, it's always my hope that we don't because numbers can say anything on this and we, I hope that we have good faith discussions on other things. I don't know what you all are thinking, if you're thinking of conditions or denial or anything else like that. But if you are thinking of things that you'd like to be different on the project, I think you owe it to Jeff at, at this point to start to frame some of that discussion. And sometimes this takes a hearing or, hearing session or two to, to get through. Um, and again, sometimes involves some spats over dollars and cents and it's usually my hope that it doesn't, that you can just kind of round out that discussion. But that's where we are right now. Um, I think Jeff has made his point pretty clear that, you know, based upon what they're paying for the property, there's probably, he doesn't feel they have a lot of leeway on that, but, um, that's where you guys are right now.
No. Just to kind of step back a little bit, uh, just with, uh, David Scott, just as a kind of, in general, just for the audience and everyone can know, in your mind, the, um, the stormwater project is laid out, kind of essentially keeps their water on their property. I mean, that's the idea of it. It seems to me that, that box, if you will, is kind of met and checked and kind of done. So I just want to make sure that we don't have any other questions on, on that as a board, so we could kind of say, all right.
Yeah. They're doing, they're doing what they need to do to meet the standards.
To meet those standards to keep the, again, their water on their property, if you will.
And make sure that post-construction is not making anything worse from pre-construction.
Right. And in addition to the, as I say, the, the suggestions as far as what to do to keep, during construction, to keep the, again, debris and waste and water on the site to, so that it can be cleaned up, so that those stands have been met. It seems, seems to be anyway, from what you've said and what you've gone through.
That's correct.
Will be met at the end of the project, so, um, you know, can we all, you know, can we all agree to put that aside for now? I'm just, you know, unless anyone else has any other questions on that portion of it anyway, before we start kind of going after this.
Well, I do have a couple of questions.
All right.
Because I did read it in great detail. So I noticed, um, and, and again, I started with the wrong thing, but to the extent that it's been answered in the subsequent one, uh, please feel free to, you know, smack me the side of the head. On page three, you talk about a berm on the south, um, on the south, southern property line.
Yep. So that, that was, that was something that was proposed in one of the interim designs while we were going through our revisions and discussions with the applicant. There looked to be, we, we talked about onsite run-on and making sure that they consider onsite run-on, not just rainfall that falls on their property lines, within their property lines, but also runoff that hits neighboring properties and, and runs across onto their property that, that currently happens pre-construction conditions, just like in their post-construction conditions, they'll send runoff across other people's property, just as it does now. So that same aspect of run-on to their property, consider that. So they at first thought, okay, well, we'll put up a wall and keep it from coming on. We don't have to consider it. But that's not really what they should be doing because then actually that will create other issues and will run somewhere else. So we, we worked through that, we talked through that. They, they removed that, that berm, that thought of a berm there and they've considered the run-on. They've gone through their calculations to consider, you know, what kind of volume and peak rates of, of flow come on to their site and how they can handle that. And they've designed their stormwater system to handle that, that run-on.
So run-on is water coming from their property onto somebody else's property?
No. They're accepting other people's.
So neighbors' property right now runoff, rainfall hits a neighbor's property upstream of them, runs through their property onto the marsh. We want to make sure that they consider that so that their pipes are sized to not only handle the runoff on their property, but then what's coming on so that their pipes are big enough to, to handle all of the flow that's actually coming to their site.
Okay. Because during that storm on March 1st, I, I just, I, I was, I was amazed, blown away. The water coming from the subject property onto the Holsteins' property, it came this way. You're saying eventually it's going to go that way?
So you're thinking of, of, it sounds like with the storm fl- the floods from, from the ocean.
Yes.
You're thinking of water coming, so we're thinking of water coming from, you know, basically the opposite way, running towards the ocean. The rainfall that hits the ground runs towards the ocean.
Rainfall flow versus ocean flow.
Yeah. Yes.
Okay.
Everyone's flooded in the-
Under the auspice of there's, put something there, don't put something there, add sand, add French drains, the, it's a, literally a drop in the ocean.
Yeah.
It's, you're not going to do anything about that.
So that, either way, that, the comment that you had brought up has been clarified and, and that berm does not exist in their current design plan.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
So forget about it.
Yeah.
Jeez. Okay. I knew I started with the wrong one. Um, uh, so we're talk, we're talking, we're trying to go through the, we're trying to go through the property, the flooding on others' property. Is that what I understand? Is that what we're doing?
Yeah, just the, the stormwater, any part of it, is any of the, correct?
I'm sure I do, but hopefully I can find. Um, one of the things that's, that's bothered me since the beginning too is, um, is the conditions as they existed when, through the first project versus now. And I, I don't think, I mean, I think we've avoided getting any, um, updated information, you know, any site conditions, updated information. Am I correct? It seems to be back from 2000 and whatever it was.
That was addressed, um, the, the, Scott and you take it from here. I think, I think Dan and Scott are satisfied as to-
Right. So there was, there was a discussion of the, the topographic survey of the lay of the land is 10 years old now. Um, but, you know, we did a site visit, we met up onsite with the applicant's engineers, we walked the site and-
You don't think there's significant changes?
Nothing, nothing has really changed based on what we saw from top, uh, topographic survey from 2008 to 2018. You know, there's nothing that's going to affect the drainage calculations the way they present them at this, at this time.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I want to say a couple of things. Bob Engler of SEB. I want to go back to the elephant, which is, do we ever-
Do we want to finish up the stormwater portion for us? Not that I don't mind, but, you know, if we could kind of, we'll get back to the elephant. It's not going anywhere. Uh, yes.
Stephanie Heber. Um, just to clarify a couple of things. Anthony, you had referenced, you said that you understood that the, you were uncertain about which bylaw to apply, that the bylaw now is different from the bylaw when this project was, was originally proposed in, in 2006. Um, that's actually not accurate, so.
Is this the part where you and Jay argue again?
No, no, no. There's, but there's two points I want to make.
Right.
I think that, that there may have been a minor difference between what 470 looked like in 2006 and what it looks like today, but that was the, the special permit granting authority. I believe back then was the planning board and today would be the zoning board. But the language and how, and let me, this is, and I thought that, um, I was addressing this in my memo of January 23rd, but let me again kind of walk you through it if I can. So, um, the bylaw, as it existed in 2006, as it exists today, when it defines what the overlay district is, that floodplain overlay district, we're not talking about the claim of floodplain, and they're getting converged here a lot, but the overlay district, it defines it the same in reference to a 1972 plan. Now, this is the part that I want to clarify and Jay and I aren't going to fight, we can disagree, but we're not going to fight, is that the Dougherty case, um, when it was looking at it, the issue, I think was under 470.9 of the bylaw, which exists today, just like it existed in 2006. And it's, and there's language in there that if the, um, basically, if they find that the, that the land is subject to flooding. So, so kind of the way it was written is that you may be within the overlay district, but maybe an individual case could argue, but my land isn't subject to flooding. And so in Dougherty, and that's the case that went to the Supreme Judicial Court. In that case, the court looked at it and said, well, and, and the, um, the, uh, the board, I think, was the one making the argument, well, it's, it's now FEMA flood, it's designated FEMA floodplain. And, um, what the court said was, well, so even if you don't see that flooding is coming in, kind of by virtue of the fact that it's FEMA floodplain and it's within this overlay district, then you, you can basically presume that it's subject to flooding. Um, so then when the Walsh case came up, which didn't go up to the Supreme Judicial Court, it just went to, uh, Superior Court, I believe, um, when that case came up, the, um, the board looked at it, granted, or granted a special permit, it was the neighbors, the Walshes, that contested it. And then as I read the history of it, um, and that zero foam lot, it was all within, if you, if you look it up on the map, it was all within the 1972 overlay. So it wasn't even an issue that part of the property was, part of the property wasn't. Um, and in Foam, when that went to the court, the court didn't overturn the board. The board issued a special permit approving the project. And then as I read the history, when it went back on remand, this board decided not, it made findings of public policy findings under the court's case, but it didn't, it voted against reopening. Um, and so as I see it, the special permit wasn't overturned because the court never overturned it. It remanded it back to the board and the board voted two to one not to touch its prior special permit. So I don't think Foam Road's been constructed yet or, or to date, but as I read the, the board's decision, um, it, it didn't overturn its prior special permit. Now, that, that can get us all into arguments, but the point that I want to make is that this site is not completely in the 1972, the overlay district as shown on the 1972 plan. And that plan is still used to define what the overlay district is. And it does incorporate part of the, the building, but it's not the entirety. So, um, I, I think that there should just be a bit of carefulness given when we're talking about the FEMA floodplain versus section 470. So I'll just, I'll leave it at that.
Yeah. So let me, let me just address briefly without, first of all, I'm not sure that's accurate with Foam, but I'm not sure it, it matters. I think the, the thing to Ed's and Sarah's point in particular on those cases wasn't so much that there's this rigid language in the bylaw that the court was looking at in terms of its reasoning and its rationale. And I think this goes especially to Ed's point, is that they said, look, it's going to flood.
It does flood, is what they said.
It does flood. So, no.
Right.
And here we know that-
It floods.
That 19, in the 1972 map floods and now the new map floods. So it's, it's more the directive of the court that kind of is leading to the notion that this isn't just black letter compliance with the bylaw, there's a policy thing that the court is enforcing. And I think Ed's point is that, well, we can't let Joe homeowner do it, but we're going to allow 48 units to go in. The court went even beyond, just like your bylaw says this. It says, the bylaw protects against flooding, so no. And, and again, I, I'm not saying that you have to or don't have to because they have some waiver authority here. That's the difference.
Right.
Is that under 40B, you can chuck to a certain degree your bylaw. That's why I say this is going more towards the community's policy choices, which you're in charge of kind of implementing through here, especially because you're wearing more hats than just the zoning board of appeals. You're wearing all the hats. So that's, that's why I think that what Ed and Sarah have said has some, has some traction here in terms of at least shaping your decision-making. Again, I am not suggesting, I don't think Anthony was suggesting, that you're going to apply it rigidly, the same way the court did necessarily, but that concern is out there. And anyone that lives in Sitewood and follows the trail of tears that comes in every storm, every spring and every fall, knows that this is as live an issue as you guys have in town.
Well, I think there's just a, I mean, first, I agree with you, Jay. I'm sorry, Stephanie, I disagree with what your reading of Dougherty. Uh, my reading of Dougherty is that, you know, we're not going to look at the rigid map and say, oh, that's, that's the bright line, you know, in the, that's the line in the sand, literally. But the question remains, does it flood? And you, you can't, nobody in this room has ever said that this property doesn't flood. Um, so that's maybe one of the single most important things that we all agree on. What, what we can do about, you know, or what we should do about is, is, is something else, but, um, it, it, it floods. I don't know what else to say.
Well, I guess I would also just say then that we can agree to disagree on that, but the, the comp permit that was issued for this project was issued with far less detailed plans than what the board reviewed here. And the HAC granted us that.
No, and I know they did.
There was no challenge to that, though.
Can I make a point? If we, I'm not an attorney. If we start talking legalese in cases, we all lose. And if that's the direction we're going, we're all losing. Does it, can I ask the board a question? It's not really germane, but does the board know what the town spent on the previous litigation? Do you have any idea?
I know I don't want to know. And, uh, and, and I, and I agree with you on the legalese and I am an attorney.
It was over half a million dollars in terms of what-
It was certainly not.
Yeah, I, I'm pretty sure it was with all the various appeals.
In fact, if I may just say, I don't like, I don't like the tenor of this whole thing. It's a case of, we're not talking about, or I'm concerned, we're not talking about how much the town's going to spend or does spend or has spent on legalese support in this condition. Um, I, we have, I have concerns about building in this area. I am generally fairly pro-development. If someone owns, I said it earlier.
Evening tonight.
If someone owns their land, they have a right to deal with it under the law. But I have some real concerns about- But I have some real concerns about this particular area, because as it exists, as it's existing there right now, you really can't develop it without bringing in a heck of a lot of earth. And that's changing the topography of the land. It's the type of thing that, without a forty B application, it just wouldn't be allowed. And I'm, I have, I'm, I'm being honest, I was honestly the first to hear.
But, but it is a forty B application, that's the big deal, I mean...
How do we do it? How do we do it? And reconcile it as, as proper use of that, of that land, of that site? And I, I, I still have a challenge with that in my mind. I'm sorry, I can't, I'm, I've said it right from the beginning, I don't know how to get around that. I, I've asked, can you explain how much fill is coming in?
Which we did.
I think they came up with, what, a thousand eighteen-wheelers, or...
Something like that.
Yeah, we...
But I mean, it was, it was a lot. Big numbers.
Yeah, it was, it's a lot of fill, but it, it's also being, being delivered to the site in not, in, I think, what was it, four weeks?
Yeah, I understand, but it's, again, I'm thinking about applications that have been before us that have had to be denied, or actually that were approved, and then were ultimately denied because of, they were, our decisions were reversed by the court. All around this flooding issue.
But not forty Bs.
I understand.
Ed, I, it doesn't sit right with me either, but that's because forty B doesn't sit right with me. But it's the law of the land, I, I think it really is. If, if you can reconcile forty B as the law of the land, it makes it a lot easier to recognize the unfairness there, I'll say it, of what you're talking about, that Joe homeowner isn't allowed to do with land what these guys arguably are, because they're gonna have four, twenty-five percent affordable units. That decision was made be, well beyond us, and, and that's how I reconcile it. It, I don't think it's fair that they're gonna get to do things with land that Joe homeowner isn't.
Yeah, and that's, that's an argument we really can't have.
I, I agree.
I mean, I mean...
The law's the law, I mean...
I'm asking tonight, then, are there any suggestions that the board has as to what they might want to see done to mitigate, or...
Yes.
Concerns that we have, where we could...
I have suggestions.
Yeah, then, I think...
So, for me, the, I, I see it that something's gonna get built on this site, multifamily's gonna get built on this site. I'm not even sure that the proposed number of units aren't gonna get built on this site. The parking has obviously been a big concern, there's pollution concerns, there's flooding concerns, there's safety concerns. I think that it's reasonable, at least until somebody proves to me it's not, that the management and operation of this facility has the ability to get those cars out of the garage within twenty-four hours' notice, and that's done through keeping keys, that's done through having the ability to tow or somehow move the car without keys, but I, I think that that's a reasonable requirement, and I think that that significantly lessens some of the concerns that we've heard and some of the concerns that we've expressed. Now, if we want to talk about no risks whatsoever of flooding, then, then, like he said, then he's going to the housing appeals. But...
Can I speak to that, because I would try to say something on that point?
Is this open for discussion yet?
Uh, no, I don't think so, but that's his...
He's part of it.
Well, he's part of the, the presentation.
I'm his lawyer.
I'm, I'm aware, I, ma'am, ma'am, I, I don't believe the chairman has opened it up to, for public comment.
But we will.
Well, public, I'm...
No, they didn't... I'm talking to the person behind it.
They didn't know.
Yes, yeah.
They'll probably need to call you ma'am. I just want to say one thing on this emergency management plan. Because we know the residents will be safe, they're living well above the floodplain, the issue is the cars. And in my experience, when you're not sure how it's gonna work, if you, if you're not sure the site plan or the whole development is gonna work, you ask for it right now. If you're pretty sure that it's gonna work, and just on the how, because it's mechanics and detail and written words and all that, you may get a condition that you can't pull a building permit or occupancy permit to satisfy you that we have this plan that works. To me, we know we can make it work, we haven't written it all down, because we don't even know if they have a permit. So that's the type of thing, to me, that sits in the latter stage, not the stage that says, "We don't think you're ever gonna get those cars out of there, we don't think the site's gonna work." We're talking about, not people now, bear in mind, under forty B, we're talking about health and safety of people. We're talking about cars flooding, and maybe this that we can, but we think we can solve that. We just ask to solve it as a condition, which we want to do, as a condition of a building permit.
I tend to agree with that as to specifics. I'm not sure we've heard anything yet on how, if you decide that, oh, it's gonna get pretty wet in here in about twenty-four hours, how are we prepared to get Joe and Karen's car out, because they're in town?
Well, Anthony, let me, let me make a suggestion. We could give you now, well, not tonight, but before the close of the hearing, I don't know, six, ten strategies that will be combined. We don't have a, a, a management association yet, um, who we would work closely with to develop a very robust plan, but we could say things like, "All owners will be required to keep a second or third set of keys with the management entity" from twenty-four, and would have to figure out, and this is a legit question, you guys would know more about this living here than I, what is the trigger event? Is there like a, a, a specific, you know, national broad, you know what I'm saying? What determines, you know, the, the flood event that triggers? If there's a twenty-four hour period, what is the whistle or the start? And I would look to the board on something that everybody agrees with. So we could put together, this is some of the things that we would expect to be in that plan, and then certainly, as my dad said, prior to a building permit, we would then have a robust, because also there's some things, when we finish the, the, the building plans for the garage, there might be, you know, some things we learn about, oh, the way the garage is gonna work, or, you know, we might have an area in the, in the basement with a key box, or, you know what I'm saying? It's that kind of detail that we don't have now that might add or enhance to that plan. So we're not saying, we've, believe me, we've thought about it, and we can give you, but I just think it would be inaccurate or not as precise as it will need to be or should be to do, or attempt to do a full plan now, as opposed to doing it, you know, when we're closer.
In addition to that, what about floodproofing the garage? Here, I, I know there was a cost factor to that in, in the past, but I'll see...
I think that's all done, right?
Yeah.
Between floodproofing the garage?
It's open, it's a water...
There are, there are underground garages in the city that are, that are completely underwater.
Yes.
Built underground?
Yeah, but I think...
No, but we've...
This has been built open...
We built it, yeah.
Of not just them, my understanding is, is our consultants as well, that that's preferred.
Our, our design is, is not necessarily our choice, it's what the code and building and the floodplain requires. So the way we've designed it is absolutely required. What you're talking about, like building, you know, with no, I, I don't think that's allowed by code.
You put a five-foot wall and protect the buildings so it don't get flooded, and...
But I don't think that the water goes around. I mean, I don't know, I mean, I'd have to talk to my technical experts, but...
I, I think it's one of the meanings, I know your, your architect had mentioned it.
No, I, I don't think that's right.
I asked him directly about it, he said, "Yeah, okay, it's expensive." So I, I, you could ask him about...
I, I, we'll ask him.
You know, there is a way to do that, it's in the code as well. And part of our discussion at that time was that, yeah, it might be, might save you some money from building stuff offsite, uh, because you keep it all there, but it could cost a little bit more to floodproof that area. So that's, as I say, we could at least look into that, get consideration information from him.
You know, before, before we get all overly involved in the value of, of vehicles, um, you know, I know you had just said, "We're not talking about people here." I am talking about people. I, I'm primarily talking about people. I think the, the cars are a huge issue for a pollutant standpoint, you know? People can replace cars. You, the fire chief has said he doesn't have access to, to, you know, all sides of the building. Let's forget flooding, let's, let's talk about a fire that somehow happens, you know?
We've talked to the fire chief several times, we've adjusted the plan, it meets all requirements. He, he's happy with the plan, he's, he's...
He's not fully, I've had recent communications, because I hadn't seen him fully give, and I'm not saying that he's unhappy, he's still not satisfied, based upon a recent email exchange I had with him. I don't know what he needs, Jeff, I'm not a fire code expert, I know that he doesn't, in a flood situation, and, and that was, that's the direct question that has not been answered by the fire chief. In a flood situation, three sides of the building have zero access to, for his, his ladder truck. And he's uncomfortable with that. In, in a non-flood situation, he has addressed some satisfaction with improvements to the plan. I, I think that that's a really significant issue, um, in a flood situation where bad things can happen, and electrical thing, bad electrical things happen, and the risk of fire increases. Not having access to three sides is a question just, and maybe it's resolvable, maybe it's not, he has not answered that question. And that's, that's the, the, having seen the emergency access issue crop up over and over and over again under forty B, that's a, a real question that I still think is out there. Now, whether that's post-permit or right now, I don't know, but every fire chief I know wants access to more than one side of a building in the worst-case scenario, and a worst-case scenario here is...
Well, Jay, let me ask you a question. What do we do when we send my dad and the architect, and he sits with the chief, and the chief says his plan looks fine?
He was saying like Jay said, he was looking at a non-flood, but you're right, that he never answered it, because we asked him.
And I asked him directly, and I don't have that answer yet either.
What did he say would stop the project? He just had a concern. We've all heard fire chiefs have concerns that never get materialized. We will do our very best to nail him down.
That's, even if you talk to, I mean, sometimes fire chiefs, as you know, they don't want to say, "Hey, I can't get there." So I, I think that whether you examine it through a fire code expert, or preferably through our chief...
It meets, it meets all state fire code.
In a flood situation, the three access has to be to more than one side.
It's more than two hundred and fifty feet.
Right, from a vehicle, a parked vehicle, you have to be able to get to every point of the building within two hundred and fifty feet. We had this issue in Winchester.
We got that solved with your fire chief. We got the two fifty solved. We don't have, how do I get into the site in a major flood, because he's concerned about that.
Just anecdotally, and part of his concern may be, we had a, two, two houses, it was two or four, down in Hammerock, that burned down, it was just an electrical fire, but because of the flooding, it was in the storm, it was because of the flooding, gone.
We'll attempt to...
Probably the worst fire situation we've had in years.
We'll attempt to meet with him again.
Uh, you know what? I, I want him to, I want him here to answer, seriously, I do.
We're against kidnapping, we're against kidnapping.
I am not against kidnapping.
I can't, yeah.
No, I, you know...
I'll follow up with him as well, I know you guys will, but I'll follow up with him as well. I have, I've had an email exchange where I'm trying to like, and that happens with the fire chiefs, because they never want to say, "I'm, I'm not gonna get there." And, um, he's expressed the concern over this exact issue, and I want him to fully, you know, whether it's in writing, or in person, or, or whatever, I, I think it's a question that has to be answered.
Because it's, it's, it's human life, it's safety.
We're not for one second saying, "Oh, we're not doing it," or "We think it's garbage."
No, I know, I know, but I'm saying, you want to know where our issues are.
It's an outstanding issue, and we're sitting, I'm representing to you that we are gonna meet with them again. I'm gonna call my architect tomorrow, we're gonna say, "Listen, Jay, it's an issue that's not uncommon to us, and knowing the plan as I do, I know we can do it, and we might have to tweak a couple of things, but we'll get there with him, and to your satisfaction."
Are there any, any, anything else the board wants, or has to address in that, besides what we've got?
I mean, I, I rely on the, on the technical stuff, though. You guys are discussing something more on a, on a basic Situate policy thing, and I think it's a, it's a good discussion, so I, I kind of leave that to, that to you. I'm, again, I, I think Jeff and his team, and Woodard and Curran have, have made good use. It's been a long time since we were here, but I think they made really good use of the time, so...
Yes.
Can I ask a question? You two, some boards keep meetings open during their forty days of discussing conditions, they're not, they don't have to take any feedback from anybody. Some boards close a public hearing, and they have forty days to meet and privately discuss conditions. I don't know how you operate, or how you would see that with Jay.
I think the last time we had open meeting, and, but nobody came.
Well, I, I'm, I'm comfortable with either, and, and to the extent that there's still information coming in, obviously keeping it open.
I'm not saying that.
Right.
When you get to that point, well, how, how will you treat it?
Well, I mean, I think that the way Jeff has framed it, in terms of the request for the extension that got us, because we're technically beyond the hundred and eighty days, and Jeff gave a, an extension through Monday. I don't know if you guys want to go month to month on this, and we make month to month. That, that was the impression I was getting from Jeff.
Well, I, I, I think the board knows this, Mr. Chairman, I think you were copied on the emails. I mean, I didn't give an extension beyond Monday, because I said, let's figure, I, I said, and I said, and Jay would attest to this, I said, "I, I expect we're gonna have some questions after tonight, and we're gonna need to submit some additional information." I said, "I'd feel more comfortable once you set the next hearing," setting the extension beyond that hearing date. So to your point, yes, I think that's a, you know, good approach. I mean, I don't, I know there's a little bit of fatigue on the board, so I don't think anybody wants to go on for months and months, but, I mean, I think we're getting close to the end, and I'm never one to say, "We're out of time, sorry, guys," you know, let's get... I mean, if we're close and we're getting there, then, you know, we'll, we'll give extensions, so...
And then, um, it's getting late, but I want to, uh, open up to the audience too, to see if there's any questions. I know there was some earlier, but if we have any more tonight, just say your name and address.
My name's Warren Burrow, fifteen Martha's Lane. I've said it over and over again, I'm glad the board brought it up, flooding is just incredible there. People have no idea unless you live there, see it come rolling, tide, how fast it comes in. Sarah saw when she visited the site. The P E from Woodward and Coverland said he really didn't look into the flooding this time earlier. So I don't know how anything could be referenced when nothing's been studied, I guess, on that, as we won't document it. Um, and if it's, I hear, when, when the tide comes all the way, and they say it's, uh, you know, minuscule amount, the ocean is infinite reserve, well, what about half tides, when it hits this fill, and then gets pushed off onto our properties? And another, just one other question I had, um, I know, Mr. Chairman, you had the discussion with Mr. Engler there, and he said that they were gonna do a balloon test with the elevations and the peaks and everything. At the last meeting, he sat right here and said that, and, um, we've yet to see, so I just wonder where that stands.
I think we had discussed some of that, but we did, didn't get a final answer as to the, the height. Again, the, the one thing about the height, we, we can't restrict the height.
You can, but, I mean, they're, they're right around where they...
Where they are.
Yeah, they're where they are.
Well, importantly, no, and we also did a, a pretty detailed shadow study, and pretty much demonstrated, where height is important if it's creating impacts, and we looked at all the shadows, and we're not casting shadows considering the existing vegetation on any, on any other properties, so...
It's to get the visible size of the building, of the peaks, and like I said, you read it to it last time, and now it's saying that this is not, I'm not sure.
Yes.
Well, well, I, I, let me go on record as saying this, if we, if you want to, I, I'm not gonna do a height test if the board's gonna say, "Well, you can only do, you know, twenty cars in the floodplain," because it's, it's silly, I mean, because we don't have a project. So I'll do a, a balloon test, but I want to, I want to know that we have a project and we have a permit, and then I'll go out and do it, but it's, it's, I mean, we've spent so much time and money and effort on this, and I understand, but the design is...
Balloon tests never work. They break, they fly in the wind, and nobody can...
Well, he said he would do it last time, and now he's going back on his word, so I disagree.
Yeah, well...
It's on record, I understand, yes.
A possibility if we get to that point later on in the project, but we have some other...
Bigger issues.
...work through first before the balloon test.
Understood. Understood.
Kathy Donahue, Pushing Landing. Just a point of clarification. When this went before the Housing Appeal Committee many years ago, they wouldn't allow a single pitcher of flooding. Flooding entered. There was no, um, um, discussion of flooding. It had nothing to do with it. They wouldn't allow it. So, that was sort of another whole issue. So, it's not that Housing Appeal looked at the situation with the flooding and, and had a fix. So, that was number one. Mr. Engler said, uh, he did, they chose to change this project and to put the garage in. The previous project had a lot more fill, but it didn't have the garage. And that's the big concern I think everybody's frightened about. Um, and when it speak of moving the cars, it's all, okay, you'll move the cars, you've got a single egress to that garage, and to get the cars out, but where do they go? Do they plow every snowstorm to make sure that there's parking? The whole thing. And the, and the, the effect of the pollutants is there. The drainage, anything that's polluted and, that's in that garage goes out to the marsh. And we've, we've documented the North and South Rivers watershed. Everybody said, "That's pretty fragile land, and we have an obligation to take care of that." And anyone that builds in that area has an obligation. We too have spent an awful lot of money. Yes, the town spent money for years. The neighbors have spent money for years bringing up these same facts. And yes, you've spent money in the last six months. We're all in this. It's cost us all money. So, no one's been left out on this game. Um, and then the FEMA mapping. This new FEMA mapping documents the fact that we're really in a very fragile, changing area, and it's getting worse by the year. This last winter, nobody could imagine. We're all paying now. We're, all the neighbors are all in, in flood zone now. We're all paying flood insurance. And so, we're all, we're all getting caught with this thing, but we realize that that's the way things are going. So, this flooding is the paramount issue, and I think, as Warner mentioned, this is an invayment. This, this isn't a pebble in the ocean. So, when the water comes in there, it has to go somewhere. And we've, and, and Sarah's the one person that's gone over there during the event to see exactly what it is. We're not making it up. So, um, this is, it's a, the flooding is truly critical to this whole project. It's costing everybody money. We're all affected. And that's the way it is. And the right thing has to be done for everybody in this one. And we appreciate what the board's doing. Thank you.
I, Marcia Klein, 146. I only have one comment. Jay spoke very eloquently about community, and so did the developers, but I don't think any attention is made to the surrounding community that surrounds the project. I am a director of Butter, Warner is, and no one has sort of made any notice of what the detrimental effects on my property and all the other property. Once that huge amount of fill is put into the project. And that's my, that's my concern. We speak about community, but we've been community in this neighborhood. I've been here for over 35 years. Kathy's been here for years. We've all been here for years. And we are the existing community, and we would like our concerns addressed.
And just one question maybe, regarding the, it seemed like there'd been a couple of questions I, we got in the, the ocean water. And is the ocean water, is the project affect the level of the ocean water to neighbors?
Directly, directly.
No, I just-
It's flooding that's been historical, and it's going to continue. And what we looked at, and what we presented in our analysis, was whether the project would make it worse on the Butter's property.
Right.
And from the engineering analysis and from the details, it doesn't make it worse on the Butter's property. All the properties will flood, as they have.
And, and just to be more specific, and tell me if you can't say, if I live 300 feet west, or south, or, or north of this project, and this project isn't there, and in X storm, the water in my basement is here, if the project is there in that same storm, is the project going to make the water in my basement higher?
It should not, no.
Okay.
The basement issue is a little confusing, but-
Well, I under, I under-
Flooding, the, the-
The height of the flood.
The height of the flood.
Yeah, I was using that as a benchmark, but yes.
Because there's too much water. It's just, it's going to seek its own level, whether something's there or not.
I mean, respect, and one comment, I think, to represent that we, the very reason the town, that Woodard and Curran is a representative of the town, and their responsibility is to make sure that not only that, when the town is represented, that means the neighbors. And we've gone to great lengths through their review to make sure all of the things you're asking are addressed. We're not callous in that regard. I mean, that's primarily what they're looking at, to make sure we're not harming the neighbors.
This is why I asked for clarification, so I understood.
And ma'am, please don't take our question there to disagree at all with that there was flooding. Sarah mentioned they went out there. I drove out there in the big storm, much to the chagrin of my wife. You would have thought I was setting out to cross the ocean, but it, the property floods, so I, I don't think anyone on the board is disagreeing with that.
I think what we're all saying is that property is, is low, and it holds the ocean's stormwater.
I don't, I'm not sure anyone's even disagreeing with that.
What they're saying is, the ocean's stormwater is so vast that it, that, that little bit of void doesn't hold enough water, make any difference in the overall.
And our, our contention in the area is that that's an invayment, and it's not, it's not the open ocean. It's, that's two miles from the open ocean, and it's, the, once the water's driven in there, it can't escape. It's just like, why did, why did the, why do they call it the new inlet? Uh, the North River, because the stormwater came in so hard in that gale, it broke a new inlet because the water can't escape. And so, that's why they, everyone feels that, like, Port Cliff is going to be broken off, because when the water gets in, the storm's surging forward, it can't escape. So, it goes around and finds another avenue to, to exit the area. So, we're not talking about the big ocean. We're talking about an area that, that the surge comes in and has to escape, and how does it escape? So, it, it's a whole different ball of wax in that department.
I think Warner Burrow, 15 Martha's Lane. I think it also gets involved in receding of the water, and it's going to stay on our property longer as well. I always look at it as, when I'm at the beach, depending on if you're a deeper water or shallow water, when the tide comes in, the wave comes in, it hits your leg, and where does it go? It just doesn't go up, right? It goes to the left, it's to the right, and that's where my property is. And that volume, massive amount of fill, is taking up space that that water would have normally stayed on their property, and now is being diverted online. That isn't connected to the wide ocean, wide open ocean on Lighthouse Ave, Ocean Sinai. That's a choked bay reserve, that that water has nowhere to go. Water doesn't back out to the ocean. It doesn't rise up. It goes to other properties, and I'm one of those other properties.
Yes.
Hi, Sandy Camesland, 21 Martha's Lane. We've never really heard the true amount yet. Maybe we can have a clarifying amount of what the number is for the fill.
Off the top of my head, I don't know, but we submitted that for the record, and I can resubmit it or bring it again. I want to say it was-
Probably, look, the-
-two or three hearings ago.
Yes. But I, I don't have the number off the top of my head, but if you could resubmit that.
Sure, we have that, yeah.
Sandy Camesland, 21 Martha's Lane. Just as a clarifying question here, I'm not sure why they wouldn't know the amount of fill that this property is going to have. They have, just even like, is it, is it 23,000 cubic feet?
You know, I, yeah, and you know me. I'm telling you. In the fact, there are so many friggin' numbers in this thing that have been going back and forth. They have it. They have it, and we'll get it to you.
Actually, we have it right here.
It's 14,000 in the flood plan and 23,000 total.
There you go.
Here we go.
Cubic feet or yards?
Yeah, yards.
The volume that you talked about, that we were going to put up, and then they decided, "No, no, you can't put the berm up because that's going to affect other properties." So, then, instead, you're going to put 23,000 cubic feet, cubic yards of fill-
It's always been there.
To make an island, so we're starting to go after the tide.
I think, I, you know, I'm one of the people who brought up the fill and concern about it. My main concern with the issue of fill is that in a, if you're building in a sensitive area, in a marsh, you know, alongside a marsh, you can't fill it. You can't fill in the nondisturbance zone near a waterway. It's not so much the volume of fill. I actually agree with the concept that the volume of water in the ocean, or in the bay, that you're, we're creating, whatever, the amount of fill we're talking about is insignificant in terms of changing that. The berm had to do with water running onto the property. Uh, it was rainwater, not ocean water. And it, berms are very traditional ways to divert water into retention and detention areas, so that water can then be recharged instead of going off onto other property. You can't create a berm to redirect the ocean. It, and even if it isn't the, you know, the real ocean, but the bay, or the, um, two miles from the open sea, it's, you can't do it. I mean, we've, we've tried it for years with hardened seawalls. It doesn't work. That's, that's, we have to be careful and try to be, um, be realistic in what we're talking about. The, the amount of fill, I have a problem with it because I just don't feel like filling, um, making land on a salt marsh is something that we've been allowed to do for, we haven't been allowed to do it forever, it seems, at least till, since probably early 60s or late 50s.
Since Boston, no, since Boston was built.
Um, and it's, um, and, and then doing it now here bothers me. It's not because of, that we're taking up space that the water would go. Just my humble opinion.
A few more questions, and it's getting late, but someone who hasn't spoke yet?
Yeah. Michael Collins, 24 Martha's Lane. You know, we all see, um, TV and, um, uh, earth, weather forecasts, and glaciers are falling off, falling into the ocean, water runoff is, you know, raising sea level tides. What's the difference between ice and dirt? You know, when you think about it. And everything is insignificant. It really, you know, it's an accumulative thing. Is it, does it make sense to, when there's a storm surge, we're not talking about, yes, it's connected to the ocean. It has infinite capacity. But the water is moving inland, and you're going to put whatever cubic yards of fill, and that's insignificant. I, I just can't get that through my head. You know, I mean, the water levels are rising. The cliffs are eroding. All that sentiment is being pushed over the marshes, which is raising the level of soil or marsh mud, and thusly, the water coming over that increases the levels. I mean, Hummer Rock is going to be gone. Where does that go? Why are we dredging? Why, why is Green Harbor? The South River has an emergency dredging this summer because boats can't get out. You know, there's an effect there. And I think it's all related. I mean, a lot of scientists, but, you know, that's my point.
Westland, 133, Chief Trust is pushing. Um, I guess, again, my biggest concern, this is currently exists a traffic safety hazard in that area, which has never been addressed. There's a blind spot. It's a 50 mile an hour passing zone. And does anyone have any, you know, is there any thing the state or anyone in town can do to, for anything that goes on there, to help alleviate potential safety hazards of construction vehicles, the general traffic, and people that might be living there?
So, let me, let me answer this just a little bit. So, you have two questions there, or two issues there on traffic. One of the things in terms of during construction, they are going to be providing post-permit, a, a construction sequencing and management plan. There'll be conditions that they have to work closely with the police department and DPW to make sure that there's routes and times and hours and all that. So, that's automatically a condition that's in all these permits. The other issue on traffic in general, they haven't changed. So, we're here on a change to a comprehensive permit, not, where, so we are only reviewing the elements that are changed from the last one. So, they haven't changed anything. In fact, they're reducing the number of vehicles that are being dumped out onto, to 3A. That traffic was reviewed in the prior one. We just don't have the authority to open up that can of worms again because that part of this isn't changing. That's why, it's not that it's not a concern, it's that it was addressed, not necessarily to our satisfaction.
It wasn't satisfactorily addressed. We had a meeting that no one from this group showed up to.
No, no, it was addressed in terms of what the courts decided. We, we don't legally have the authority to address anything that was resolved in the prior go-around in the litigation. And we raised that issue at the Housing Appeals Committee. This board raised that issue, and it fell on essentially deaf ears. I'm not disagreeing with you that there are, isn't some issues there more for pedestrian safety than anything else, but it, those issues were resolved. We just don't have the authority. We're here dealing with the changes that they brought to us, and the changes to the, the delineation which created the flood thing. Though, that's why those things are on the table. Um, and there's a few other issues that also we're not addressing here that were, um, resolved in, in the applicant's favor in the prior go-around. Not because we don't want to. The board is no doubt sensitive to those issues.
We weren't responsible for anything that happens at this point.
Well, I, I think, what you're saying, it goes back to the original decision, and that's what we're, we can't re-discuss it.
There were traffic studies at that time.
Yeah, there was traffic and peer review on the traffic.
So, it's, it was addressed. It was-
But it's 2004, yeah.
Understood, but it-
Was that before the rotary?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Brakes were trialing them.
It was all future build condition. I, I mean, I'm not suggesting that it's not a, a concern, but the, the, the traffic issues are just simply, from a legal perspective, just not on the table. That and just basic community affordable housing planning, those were two main, major issues addressed in the prior permit. And they're just, they're just not on the table. The wetlands delineation in terms of bordering vegetated wetland under the local bylaw, also not on the table. Those are three issues that I still feel strongly that we, the board did not get a fair shake, but the courts do what the courts do. And so, those are resolved. It's not a, but on the construction level, during the periods of construction, that isn't it something that will get addressed in the permit, and they will have to demonstrate that they can do that safely and not interfere with traffic, not dump dirt out on the roads, do it during hours that are more feasible for people to work with. So, that's all out there still, and that will get addressed.
Any other questions tonight?
No, I, I think for, I mean, obviously, we're, we're all going to see each other again, and I think parking, fire, and I think maybe height, we put aside for the time being, but parking and fire, I think we want to hear more from you guys about.
So, if, one, if you could agree to extend?
Well, when's the next hearing?
Don't look at your watch. Give us eight hours to sleep. We'll be back.
Yeah, our next scheduled hearing is the third, Thursday in June, June 21st.
Oh, I would hope we don't have to do this on the back of a regular meeting.
But what we'd like to do is discuss with the board times that we can, if it's another meeting.
I, I mean, I've, I'm going to give you an extension. I just would prefer to give it beyond the next hearing. You know what I'm saying?
Yeah, but it's-
I mean, I don't think there's major, I mean, maybe for you, maybe I'm missing something. I don't think that, like, between this hearing and the previous one, there was major work that needed to occur. I don't think there's that kind of work.
No, but we have to discuss among us our schedules of when we can meet room availability and stuff like that. So, it's difficult for us at this point to give you a date.
We have to.
You have to.
We have to. It has to be a date certain, the continuance.
All right. But our next meeting or the continuance?
The continuance.
Where this, when this hearing continues.
Yeah.
It can-
That's my only point.
Our next meeting is the 21st of, of June, is our next regular scheduled hearing. Is that, how's any idea?
Yeah, I think, let's try to do it sooner, and not with a regular meeting. Because we, we only heard three me, I mean, we only heard three applications. We have, you know, it's shocking. We have other matters.
Yes. Have you, when do you, when does the town expect to hear back from D E P on the wastewater treatment facility permit?
I, I think that's still out there in front of us. It's just not this board has no-
That doesn't affect anything either?
No.
Okay.
No, not this board's jurisdiction, thankfully.
Uh, we could have a June 14th?
Cannot.
No, not there. Uh, 28th?
Oh, can't we do it sooner?
Well, I was trying.
Is this 7th?
Sooner.
Possible?
7th.
You guys can do some emergency plans by then, no doubt?
You mean, with the fire chief?
No, no, the fire chief issue is separate in terms of putting some flesh on the bones on your.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I can give them available 7th.
Me too.
June 7th?
No, Ed, Ed can't, you can't. Oh, you can, can, I can.
I forgot, my phone's in my car, but I'll make, I'll, I have no European vacation plan, so I may, I'll make it work.
I'm still, I'm still working on that.
No summer break yet. So, June 7th, 7 o'clock at. Is that already?
We'll have to.
We'll find it.
We may change the location at the date.
Relocate the venue, but.
That's okay. So, June 7th?
Yeah.
7 or 7:30?
7.
7.
Is, is, do you need, no.
Get a, a letter for, to, to Annie on that?
Yeah. I'll do that.
And again, Anthony had mentioned already, but it sounds like.
To the Monday following, like you did before.
That's a Thursday, I believe, right?
Yeah. Just to reiterate, look at one, the parking, the, one, the plan, floodproofing the garage is a possibility, you can speak to your architect, the access.
Fire chief's.
Yeah, and also, also, again, look at the access in a flood situation. I think that was the main concern to the other side of the building.
Fire chief's access.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, I'm going to email him in the morning, I'll copy you on that email.
I think I know the three or four things that you guys.
Yeah.
I'll copy you on that, I'll, because I have the last email with him on it, so.
From, oh, from the fire chief, I mean.
Yeah, I'll copy you.
All right. Okay, all right, thank you.
Audience member, June 7th, that's, in the meantime, too, if there are other questions, you can certainly email us.
We'll do that, but I'm insignificant.
Information ahead of time, we can try to get.
Quincy Bar Association dinner. Quincy has its own bar association?
Oldest bar association.
That's right, I knew that.
Minutes.
I was president last year.
April.
We still have to.
We got a couple of things, sorry.
Don't you guys.
Motion to approve the April meeting minutes circulated by Annie.
Second.
Did we do a motion to continue the hearing?
Yes.
How did I miss that?
With the date, and everything.
Yeah, did all that, okay.
Motion to continue the hearing.
Remember, like.
Yes.
What do you mean, the oldest bars?
Seconded, seconded.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second.
Good night, Citrus.